Good evening, this is the regular city council meeting for July 1st, 2020. For the record, council members Espiro, Darling, McAllister, Groat, Rule, and Williamson are, or I'm sorry, Rule are present and Councilwoman Williamson is absent. And of course, we have Councilwoman Rule and Councilman Darling participating remotely. We will now rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item of business this evening is approval of the proposed reamended agenda. The agenda was amended initially to add an executive session. That amendment was made and the amended agenda was posted at least 48 hours prior to the meeting. However, an additional amendment was made yesterday to indicate that item 7A COVID-19 update would be a potential action item. Under the Idaho open meeting law, because this additional amendment was made less than 48 hours prior to the meeting, the proposed reamended agenda cannot become effective until a motion is made and council votes to approve. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the proposed reamended agenda.
I think Deb's trying to...
I think you're on mute.
So moved.
Okay. To your second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. This will be a roll call vote.
Councilwoman McAllister?
Yes.
Councilman Espiro?
Yes.
Councilman Groat?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rule?
Yes.
Councilman Darling?
Yes.
Motion passes. We will now continue on with announcements. Is there, are there any announcements from staff?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have a couple of announcements tonight. First, I'm going to have Amanda Wilson, our Infrastructure Development Services Manager, give a brief update announcement on our consumer confidence report for our water system, drinking water system. And while Amanda's coming up here, I'll also note that that consumer confidence report is also available on our website and there is a link directly on our city Facebook page as well.
Thank you, Jennifer. Just wanted to inform council and the public that we have released our annual consumer confidence report, which is our water quality report that's required by the EPA every year. It's available on our Facebook page, it's on our website in the news section. I highly encourage everyone to check it out. It's got a lot of useful information about how, where the water that we drink comes from, how we go about treating it, how it gets to the tap water, and what you should know regarding health and safety concerns. So again, encourage everyone to read it.
Sounds fun.
It is actually interesting.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, our second announcement and just general update from staff, it's relative to the 4th of July festivities that are permitted over this weekend. So Chief Kuhn is going to address kind of some of our plans on the law enforcement front for enforcement. We've had some questions with that relative to numbers of people coming in town and, and what type of presence we will have there. And also, I believe that Steve and, I don't know if Ron is here also, but Steve and Ron are here, the event organizers, we've been working closely with them on, as we do with all of our event organizers, on final plans for the events, coordination with the city, and in particular, relative to our uptick in COVID cases. Again, compliance with guidelines and best standards there. And Mary's also available to answer any questions council or the mayor may have.
So with all of our events, thank you, Jennifer, with all of our events, we work closely with those organizers of those events, the same has been for the 4th of July event. I know I've met with them and had some concerns from some of the community about what's, what are we doing in preparation and prep for this meeting. It's, there's a lot of stuff that happens behind the scenes, a lot of operational plans that take place without going into great details. Part of it's an educational piece for our public that's been taking place this week. You've seen some of our Facebook stuff that's taken place, just kind of reminding our citizens, our guests who'll be coming in, what are some of the rules? Like for the beach, for example, we've got our Facebook posting out, and we, it's some of those reminders that are challenging to enforce, but it's the dogs, the alcohol, fireworks are actually, can be a problem at our beach on that night. I know there's been some people teasing us about the poppet concepts, and the problem is they get bigger and bigger every year, and they get, they get louder and louder, and they become more dangerous every year. And so when you have a large crowd of people, for example, running around and kids are lighting sparklers or throwing poppets or stuff, there's potential for injury for our guests and our community at the beach. So getting that, getting some of that information out on, on the side of what's going on and some expectations why they're at the beach. Parking for those that haven't been to the beach in the summertime normally is a challenge for park. This event, we'd expect nothing lasting a nice day with, with not only our locals, but our, our guests that'll be coming in. Reminders of where to park, where not to park, I know those are challenging, they're challenging for us to enforce, they're challenging for people to find parking. I encourage our public that is close to park outside, walk into the beach. We do, we, we have extra staff that comes in for our 4th of July. When I say extra staff, we'll have, all of our guys will work on either a day shift or a night shift that night in protection of our community. The, we block off, if you haven't been to our event, we block it off so you can walk out peacefully without dodging cars. It takes a lot of prepping that takes place in some of those events, but it helps, helps facilitate some safe passage. But so park, we as a police department, I want to encourage you, if you're coming to park outside and walk into the beach and then walk out, you'll get in and you'll get out faster. Cars have to wait if you haven't been to our event before. Some of those little things, we're going to have extra staff, even on the parade side of stuff, we've had, I'm even speaking with their organizers and how do we deal with people that may be agitators either side there. We're going to have extra guys on bike patrol this year that'll actually bike in and out of the event, they'll be more visible. So you should see a little bit more visibility in law enforcement that you've probably seen in the past during the actual parade, and you'll see a, a more visible presence even at the 4th of July for the fireworks that evening with the officers, not only on foot patrol, but on bicycles and in cars down and around that beach of that downtown core. So, but with that, I had, I had Ron come back in, I thought it was important for him to kind of give you a little bit of update of where he's at, some of the people that have registered for the event, some of the rules that they've instituted, some of the guidelines they've put out. So Ron, if you want to come up and take over for your elementary.
All right, as Chief Kuhn had said, I was asked to come here and give a brief update on what was going on. And to start things off, I want to reiterate a couple of things. There's been some rumors floating around because of myself and Steve that are the ones that are doing the 4th of July this year, concerns about our independent beliefs and all, and I want to reassure everybody, the city, the community, that our beliefs aren't at play. We saved the 4th of July parade and added a few things because I think it's very important to save it for the community, for the kids sitting out on the sidewalk, watching the parade, for everybody watching the fireworks. So there is no agendas, there's no special interest on our part, and it's written into our policy that you can see on our website, that we're not allowing any special agendas or special interests into the parade or to the park. That's not what this day is about. This day is about celebrating America's birthday, plain and simple. And if you got something else in mind, then we're not going to allow it, we're not going to put up with it, plain and simple, on all sides. We got something else working kind of against us this year is the COVID, addressing some of those concerns there. We have decided to do away with our water bill and seed spitting contest, so we will not be doing that. As an extra precaution, we're also going to be checking all of the volunteers that are working that day, we're going to be taking their temperatures and having them sign a release that they have not been around anybody that they know that has been affected with the COVID. So we're trying to do as much as we can on our part to make sure that everything is as safe as it can be. I don't know, is there anything else that I need to address on that?
Yeah, I have a question for you, Ron. Are you, in any of your promotional material or any of your signage encouraging social distancing, six foot spacing?
We will have signage at the parade and signage at the event, we have a whole two foot by three foot board, sandwich board with that stuff on there. Yeah.
Counsel, any questions? No, thank you, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Is that it, Chief?
That's it, assuming that's my question.
Okay. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thanks.
Anything else from staff?
Not anything else from staff. I think I just note too, relative to the events in the park, we have our signage, city signage too, about social distancing, stay home when you're sick, that kind of thing. So that's posted on our trail entrances as well as all of our parks, including the parks where the afternoon activities will occur.
Thank you. All right, I've got a hot mic here. Announcements from council.
Yeah, so I've been, luckily with the, the job that I have, I get to drive around and meet a lot of people and I've gotten, I've had the opportunity to continue to talk to a great many groups of people. One individual that I've got on my route is, his name is Eric Darstad. And he, in 2020 along, or 2002, along with Sandy Compton, came up and made this film that specifically talks about Sandpoint. At Sandpoint, at the end of the Long Bridge, I, when I first moved up to Sandpoint, this was the first film that was playing at the Canada, and it had, it was sold out. And so we had to buy a copy and rent a VHS because it was all still boxed up because we had just moved in. I had forgotten how profound and historical this film was. So I went to the library and rented a copy, and then I'd asked a couple of the people about it, and there's a couple dozen of these copies at the museum. And for anybody that's either new here to Sandpoint, Bonner County, or anybody that has been here for a while and might be a little confused or having a tough time figuring out what's going on currently, I strongly recommend to purchase or rent this film and help understand the deep compassionate, tolerant community that we have inherited, that's been here way before any of us even knew about Sandpoint. So a lot of this is just a big thanks to Eric for spending some time with me and explaining to me where, what his story is, and then Sandy Compton for being just an excellent writer. So again, Sandpoint, at the north end of the Long Bridge, an excellent film, please go to the museum, check it out. And that's all I got, my friend. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, appreciate that. Counsel, anything else? Anyone? I would like to read a statement, and this is a message to our citizens in Sandpoint. This was published today on our social, on our website and social media platforms, and this was, this is a statement endorsed by the council and myself. And it's in response to the, I would say unprecedented amount of emails that we've received over the last several weeks and with all of the events that have been happening here locally and nationally over the last month, and in particular, the last couple days, it's just, it's continued to increase. People feeling very passionate on all sides of issues around, around Second Amendment, around First Amendment, around the city's enforcement of laws and constitution, Idaho Constitution. And so I know the council felt very strongly, myself, that we need to do what we can as, as elected leaders to, to do what we can to bring the community together and try to overcome the divisiveness that, that is plaguing our, our community and, and our nation to a significant degree right now. So towards that end, I will share this statement. "The past several weeks and months, a growing amount of divisiveness has gained a foothold in our community, and this pains all of us to witness. As we watch how this, how this has played out in other communities across the country, it points to the need for all of us now, more than ever, to come together as a community. Historically, we have always found a way to acknowledge and celebrate our differences and opinions, even in the most difficult of times, and we must return to our foundation in this regard. As your elected officials at the city of Sandpoint, we are responsible for overseeing your local government to ensure necessary, effective, and efficient services are provided to our residents, businesses, and visitors. We are the stewards of your hard-earned tax dollars, which requires us to be vigilant in our focus on the business of your local government. We are also responsible for overseeing the enforcement of our city ordinances and laws fairly and equitably. Government must remain neutral and protect the rights of all citizens. In the last two weeks, we received a letter from the Institute for Constitutional Advocacy and Protection at the Georgetown University Law Center. While we respect this organization's mission, we have our own legal counsel at the city who serves as our chief legal advisor to ensure we are acting lawfully and protecting the rights of our citizens, business, and property owners and visitors. We are confident in the advice we receive and will not be pursuing additional outside assistance at this time. We are living in unprecedented times, and we have heard from members of our community who are fearful for the health and safety of their family members and friends. We have also heard from many individuals who are concerned about the intentions of others as they exercise their right to express their freedoms as granted under the U.S. Constitution and Idaho law. We are committed to supporting the public we serve and providing excellent service. In doing so, we stand against prejudice, fear, ignorance, and hate, and will work to bring our community together and to maintain a welcoming environment where every person feels safe. We encourage all of our community members to join us in this effort and strengthen the connections in our community. It is time for us to mend our rifts and come together with compassion and without judgment to acknowledge and celebrate our differences and find common ground. We must remain committed to protecting this beautiful place known as Sandpoint." So we'll not, we will now move on to the public forum portion of the meeting. Please note that any written comments submitted by members of the public who requested that those comments be forwarded to city council are forwarded and included as part of the permanent meeting record as appropriate. In the interest of time, for those who wish to speak on general items during the public forum, as it's, that's what the public forum is for, is for addressing general items as well as for those who wish to speak on specific items on our agenda, a total of 20 minutes will be dedicated to public, let me, let me start this over. So the public forum is for addressing general items that are not on the agenda or items that are on the consent calendar. We're going to allow a total of 20 minutes at the beginning of the meeting and any extra time that's needed, and I expect, we've got a lot of people that have signed up, so we will be taking those additional comments at the end of the regular agenda. Those participating in the meeting will please refrain from disruptive behavior. This will include making loud noises, clapping, shouting, or engaging in any other activity in a manner that disturbs, disrupts, or impedes the orderly conduct of this meeting. Public participation is and will remain at the discretion of the mayor. So we also, for those who are new here, there is an executive session this evening, and the council does not, or myself does not, take comments on executive session items. So this public forum portion of the meeting is also an opportunity for anyone who would like to speak about the executive session to speak at this time. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes. In the interest of time, please do not repeat prior comments, but simply state your support of those comments. Comments shall not be personally derogatory nor shall they be personally directed to any individual, organization, or business. Do not direct any questions to the mayor, city council, or city staff during your comments, please. Before you begin your comment, you will state your name and whether you are Sandpoint city resident. If you reside outside city limits but own property or business within the city, you are welcome to state as much. If you wish to speak on a specific topic itemized on the agenda, please do not speak at this time. There will be time during that agenda item for public comment specific to that matter. When it's your turn to speak, the mayor or the clerk will call your name, at which time we ask that you, and please introduce yourself and state whether you live in Sandpoint city limits, and you will please come forward to the podium in front of you there. Again, you'll have three minutes to speak, and also, in the interest of those who would like to come in here and, and speak after you, if you would please make space by making your seat available for those who are out in the foyer waiting to come in. So we'll now begin with the first 20 minutes of public forum time, and clerk, if you could give us the first name, please?
Anne Giant Valley.
Can you give us the first three names and we can create a queue?
Jane Purdy. And Steve Wasilko.
Hi.
Hi, my name is Anne Giant Valley. Sorry. I'm Anne Giant Valley, and I live in Sandpoint, and I would like to address the Sandpoint Black Lives Matter, Black Lives Matter request. And I sent you all a letter, and I'm just going to re, kind of reread that, okay? And thank you all for serving on our city council, I appreciate it. I live in two communities, here in Sandpoint and also in Manchester, Washington. I was in Manchester when the militia came to Sandpoint to guard the student organized protest for Black Lives Matter on June 6th. It concerns me that armed citizens in the area did not have faith in the city police to do their job. This, this militia may have training in de-escalation, proper holds, et cetera. However, not all of those who felt compelled to do the job of our police that day have the exact same training as each other. Sandpoint's well-trained police have the same expectations for each member of the department. I personally have had excellent interaction with the Sandpoint police. Each officer has been friendly, helpful, and well-trained with my speeding, meaning that the chief of police for an organized rally and a problem with the dog and noise issue one neighbor had with another. The job of any police department is not easy, and giving them more tools and training, such as Sandpoint Black Lives Matter has requested, only makes them better. It is with great passion that I urge you to support the demands of the Sandpoint Black Lives Matter movement. One, elected officials make public statements that support racial justice. Two, provide annual anti-racist training for all police and city employees, including de-escalation training for all police funded from the current budget. Number three, create and implement a community oversight board for the city police department in line with what is recommended by Campaign Zero. Number four, the schools within the city must use disciplinary action for students involved in harassment and posting race-based harassment and slurs on social media. Number five, the schools must develop effective policies to prohibit racist activities and display of racist symbols at school, and implement a restorative justice model for these rules to educate perpetrators about the effects of their action. Number six, provide anti-racism training for all staff and students in the Lake Ponte Grande School District. We all have implicit bias. Some in our community have explicit bias. I would like to see all in our community learn to be tolerant of and accept people of all race, color, creed, nationality, sexual orientation, et cetera. To, sorry, I would like to know that racist literature, phone calls, such as robocalls people have received in the past, insinuations, display of the Confederate flag, blowing coal, swerving toward protesters, which happened to me in December of 2019, et cetera, not be present in our town. I know that asking almost the impossible because we cannot get in people's heads, but laws can enforce, enforce actions that are not acceptable in a country that claims justice for all. I want to live in a community that has justice for all. Finally, I ask you to seek an attorney general.
Your, your time is up.
Okay.
Appreciate those comments.
Thank you for your time. Thank you all for serving. Bye now.
Thank you. Next?
Next is Jane Purdy, and then Steve Wasilko, and then Colin Beggs.
My name is Jane Purdy. I live, I reside outside the city limits in McCleve. Thank you for having, allowing us to session. I'll first thank you for your recent announcement not to press forward with a potential litigation. This would have been folly of the highest order. The rights granted us by God are spelled out by our constitution and protected by our government. When the government, whether federal, state, or local, chooses instead to rescind or control those rights, then it's time for them to step down or be removed. I will comment next on last session's reading of the very pointed and divisive proclamation. To use the mayoral position to promote a one-sided agenda is egregious and should not go without repercussion, especially considering the proclamation was not on the agenda nor was it made available to the public. It goes without saying that a majority of the people in our great community have nothing but love, kindness, tolerance, and acceptance for their fellow Americans and other Idahoans. To write a proclamation and insist it be signed and agreed upon is petty and childish and has no place in adult society. Many, if not most, businesses are caught in an unfair crossfire. One side is willing to live and might live in peace, the other obviously not so willing. It becomes obvious who the tolerant ones are. Our local businesses need to stand up to this foolishness, reassert that they have the right to provide or refuse service to whomever they wish, and serve all levels and types of society without being branded, boycotted, and destroyed because of their simple desire to provide a service to our community and provide for their families. Next, I'd like to comment how unjust it is that the chief of police should have had to defend his police force, their training, and their funding to a group that at once, while wanting their protection, also demand they limit their effectiveness, reduce their funding, yet increase their training. It is absurd and laughable if it weren't so serious. Any breaches of professional conduct should of course be addressed appropriately, but this fascination on the .01% of incidences is maniacal and idiotic. They're an entire host of people that have shown they did not receive the spankings where they so richly needed in childhood. Spankings designed to bring discipline, control, and respect for others. Now it's obvious they're acting out as those spoiled children expecting that the world revolve around them. We, the people, demand a return to reason, sanity, and the ability to live in peace with our fellow brothers. This great country, I will remind you, is a constitutional republic, not a democracy, governed by the will of the people according to a set standard of law, not a democracy to be destroyed by the mob mentality. I will speak again the resounding words of a much-loved president during his inaugural speech on January 20th, 1961, U.S. President John F. Kennedy. And so, my fellow Americans, ask not what your country can do for you, ask what you can do for your country. Thank you.
Next?
My name is Steve Wasilko. I'm a city resident, business owner in the city, and I initially came to talk about the ICAP potential litigation, but I appreciate the city council and the mayor's statement, and I'm really glad that we're going to try to move forward and not divide the community any further. I want to say that I agree with everything that Jane Purdy just said, and I too have a problem with the proclamation that the mayor had. The Love Lives Here community, which is headed up by Rebecca Holland of North Idaho Women, I have personally been on the receiving end of more hate than I've ever seen, you know, directed towards me. I find it very interesting in the proclamation that gender, sexual orientation, race, everything is listed in there. One thing that's not listed in there is political leanings, and that is where the hate comes from in this town. I don't, I don't see racism in this town. I don't, I don't see people that hate each other for, for many things except for, and if you were on the left, or if you're on the right, we are so divided in that way. And again, I've seen people, I've seen myself on, on the receiving end of the hate from this group of North Idaho women who are running this Love Lives Here campaign, and there are businesses that are not being asked to sign the pledge because they know for a fact that they're conservatives, so they're not going to approach them. I've talked to some of the businesses who felt that they were pressured into signing this pledge. Some of those businesses have now asked Rebecca to remove their name and have taken their stickers down because they didn't realize what was going on in this town regarding all this. So it seems that if this was just private organization that was going out there and doing this, I think that's fine for them to do because everybody's got a right to say what they need and do, but to have a, a public official and, and, you know, in you signing that, it kind of says that the, the city is behind this, and I feel that's really unfair to be targeting businesses. I think the only thing it's going to do is divide this community even more, and I think that, you know, like you guys have said in your, which is statement that you read earlier, we're trying to bring everybody together now. We're not trying to keep everybody apart, and the Love Lives Here campaign is, is absolutely going to tear us apart even further. So I hope you would think about that and maybe even rescind your proclamation at some point. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, and I would remind everybody to keep the comments, please keep them not derogatory to any individual or organization. You know, with the exception being the elected body that you see out before us, we're fair game, but let's leave the citizens out of it, please. Thanks.
Good evening. My name's Colin Beggs. I own a business, served on PMZ, and volunteer for a variety of local nonprofits and live in the city of Sandpoint. I'm Ron Staden, city council members. First and foremost, I want to thank each of you for serving our city and doing the difficult work that needs to be done at times. I've written each of you two letters over the past couple of weeks and hope you receive them. I guess I'm here to kind of share my personal experience, the timer's not on, by the way. I personally know people who organize BLM marches, spoke out in opposition to the armed groups and serve in public office that have had their lives threatened for doing so. I live in South Sandpoint and I stopped going on my evening walks through town for a week out of fear for my own safety and that of my non-white partner. One father told me that he has a front pack for his infant, but that would be like wearing a baby as a body shield, so avoided town altogether. And these aren't isolated stories, they're kind of all over the place. I do value the Second Amendment and exercise that right, but as importantly, I believe in exercising the responsibility which accompanies that right. Messages of inclusivity, civil discourse, and peaceful democratic responses to civic issues are expressed in a variety of ways in the Sandpoint Comprehensive Plan, which is a broad-based democratically-created document to guide all those that serve our city. It's there, it's in writing, it's all over the place. For those in support of an armed counter protest, I do ask that you take a moment to imagine armed groups who you disagree with exercising the same presence in front of your home night after night. For many of us, that is what happened. Being in that constitutional law is a very specific field of study. There was much to be gained through education and information that ICAP would have provided and nothing to be lost. There was no lawsuit process, it was purely an educational opportunity. So I am disappointed by your decision. Personally, I will be voting for and campaigning for those council members who choose to take up this issue now and offer an actionable path forward. That's all. I appreciate all of you and take care.
Thank you, Mr. Beggs.
Anita Arret, Marty Stitzel, and David Van Natter will be next.
My name is Anita Arret. I live in the city, I have a business in the city. I appreciated the mayor's words, but words cut both ways. At the last city council meeting, the mayor enthusiastically supported a proclamation for a declaration of kindness campaign promoted by a particular group here in this community. Part of this proclamation says, "We denounce any acts of racism, bigotry, xenophobia, religious discrimination, antisemitism, and acts of discrimination based on a victim's gender identity. We believe in love, unity, and inclusiveness. We believe in equality and respect for all, not only Idahoans but all people on this great earth." Unfortunately, I have brought to you a sampling of documented comments from people who are promoting this initiative and the person that's leading this initiative. One, "If any of you friggin' idiots get anyone I love sick and/or die from this, you better hide. Hope you all hug and kiss and then self-quarantine your asses. Would solve a lot of problems here in Bonner County." Another, "Can we just let them all gather in one large church and then lock the doors from the outside? Let them lick the pews and kiss their cousins. Check on them after a couple of weeks. #EndOfProblem #RejectRedoubters." From the leader of this initiative, nationalists, supremacists, patriots, alt-right Nazis, equal, all the same dangerous mentality rearing its ugly head in Idaho. There are many more examples, but I think this is enough to make my point. Finally, at the June 17th city council meeting, a man who is a friend of many in this community spoke about his feelings about local ABLM supporters. Here are a few of the cringe-worthy and hateful comments from local ABLM supporters in this town. Seriously, though, who paid this guy to come here and let our closeted racist lick his expletive? Take photos with him and proudly show off their black friend as proof of their colorblindness. Put your internally oppressed black guy back on the shelf. Most of us by now know to pay this kind no mind and push forward with the fight for equality regardless of who opposes it. And another one, "I don't give an expletive about any brainwashed Uncle Tom expletive that you dumb expletive repubs love to use as a martyr." Fundamentalist, Uncle Tom, racist, vigilante, those are hateful terms and they're coming from the very people promoting this initiative. I'm a live-and-let-live person until I'm attacked and defamed, and then I'm forced to stand up and say that the very people standing behind their Love Lives Here signs and stickers are completely blind to their own hypocrisy.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
It'll be Marty Stitzel and then David Van Natter, and then we will be through our first 20 minutes.
Thank you.
I'm Marty Stitzel. I live about a half mile outside of the city limits of Sandpoint. First of all, I want to say I'm sorry for the harassment and the hate that was shoved towards our mayor and some of our city council people at the, at the last meeting that I was at by the gun people, I think. They were expressing something that should have been considered good, but they turned it around and threw it back at them. Regarding the gun issue, I do have a problem with that. I'm a gun owner. I used to be a gun enthusiast, but I think all of us here, throughout our life, we were taught how to act and things that we had to deal with. When we were five or 10 years old, if we didn't deal with it the way we were supposed to deal with it, we got in trouble either by our parents or our school people or whatever, we got grounded or whatever. I think the gun lobby and the gun people for the last couple of decades for sure, especially the last five years or whatever, have dug themselves into a hole. If they were good about it the way we used to be 25 or 50 years ago, when I used to be an avid hunter and an avid gun person, we wouldn't be dealing with this issue that we're dealing with with guns right now. If, you know, if they're, if they're at the point where they're showing up in meetings like this or downtown with their assault weapons and stuff like that, I think they've stepped over the bounds. You know, and this is not good for all of us. You know, I don't want to go downtown. I've got friends that, that say they're, they're not going to go downtown. We have other friends that come into town and say, "What are all the guns doing around here?" You know, it just, I don't know what can be done about it. I know it's a First Amendment or a Second Amendment thing, but I don't think that the framers of our Second Amendment would have said what they, would have addressed it the way they did when they set that up a couple hundred years ago if they knew what it could turn into, back when it took two minutes to shoot or a minute to shoot a gun and another minute to reload and shoot it again. So I think, you know, they, they're still rest on what it currently says. I think it needs to be changed, but I don't expect that's going to happen in this county or this country. But something needs, you know, they need to realize that we have, we used to have a really nice town here. It was peaceful. There was not this kind of division until the last couple of years when all of a sudden the gun people decided they wanted to take over, and it's only going downhill from here. Regarding what one of the other customers or the other people up here, speakers said about businesses, whether or not they want this stuff in town or not, I do know a business or a couple of businesses, one business that I know for sure, I won't name it because I don't think I'm supposed to, but has expressed concern because of the hate that he's receiving as a result of having hate or Love Lives Here type signs in his business. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, appreciate that. Next?
Mayor, councilman, councilwoman, and the ones on at home, thank you for listening to us. I just, yeah, the unity thing here, we got Fourth of July coming this week.
Sir, for the record, could you please say your name?
For the record, my name is Dave Van Natter, and there's moments of the week and day I live at Sandpoint and then sometimes I live in the county, and every once in a while I go to Montana. But, and what I'm talking about is unity and thank you for listening to us. We've, we've got Independence Day coming up. We've, it's been a historical thing ever since we were little kids and we've had that parade every, every year. Thank you so much for having it. Let's unify on that. Let's unify that we've only got eight more weeks of summer and then it's going to snow in the high country, say the bad word, snow, and let's, let's get together as a community. The past is the past, we can only move forward. Thank God no one got hurt or injured or no windows got broken. That's all I could say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, appreciate that. All right, that concludes our first 20-minute block of the public forum, and we will proceed with that, continue that at the end of our regular agenda. So now we will move to the consent calendar. For the record, the total amount of bills is $882,403.78 for regular payables. Are there any items council wishes to remove from the consent calendar? Seeing none, it would entertain a motion that the consent calendar be approved?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. This will be a roll call vote.
Yes.
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 And the consent calendar is approved. The first item in our old business this evening is a COVID-19 update from city administrator Jennifer Stapleton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Melissa's going to help me with pulling up a presentation. Hopefully this all is visible. I want to provide generally kind of an overview, and it's been a few meetings since we've had an update relative to COVID-19 on number of cases in the community, the city's response, as well as what's happening at the state level. We just had another call with the governor's office today, so I've got some, some updates from the governor's office as well. We have seen, as I'm sure council members, the mayor, and the community is aware, an uptick in the number of confirmed COVID cases in our community. We started to see numbers really increase around June 17th, and it was just before that time that we had confirmation from Panhandle Health District of community spread. Over the last week, we have seen some days with, with greater increases, even greater increases day over day. Beginning June 24th, we had four additional confirmed cases. June 25th, we had six additional confirmed communication cases, and June 29th, five additional confirmed cases, daily cases in our community. As of today, we have two confirmed cases in the community today. That leaves us a total number of confirmed to date of 32 cases. 25 of those are active and seven of those are no longer being monitored. So we can... Our update from the governor this afternoon, this is, these are statewide, statewide data as of midday, and they didn't have the final reporting for the health districts across the state, so our meeting was about 2:30 this afternoon. As of that time, there were just over 6,000 cases across the state. The state saw the highest one-day increase of cases yesterday, that was plus 365 cases. As of midday today, what they had heard was an additional plus 200 cases across the state, and again, that was probably going to increase based on final numbers reporting from the health districts across the state. Of note was that most people in Idaho who have had confirmed cases are under the age of 40. In terms of data monitoring at the statewide level, where the governor's been working with the health district to determine, again, the stages of reopening and what are kind of those data metrics that they're looking at, there's been an uptake in ER cases, but overall hospitalization rates, based on their monitoring, are good. There are 40 to 50 hospitalizations across the state, 10 to 20 individuals who are in the ICU, and five to 10 who are on ventilators due to COVID.
And I would add, that's far below our capacity. So I want to say it's 186 ICUs, but that's what I recall, so, but we, we still have a lot of bandwidth there.
Yep, yep. So that's one reason with the increasing number of cases, there's been questions that the public has had, and we've received those questions here in the city on why not revert back into phases. And one of the data metrics that is considered is really the capacity of our health, our health system and the ability to respond. And as of this date, the governor and public health agencies are reporting that we have a good ability to respond across the state within our healthcare system. I note again that the handoff in terms of the phases of reopening and so whether regions across the state need to consider based on what's happening in that region, going back in terms of phases or to a stay-at-home order, that has now been handed off as a regional management approach versus a statewide approach. So we saw last week that Ada County, in response to the recommendation of the Central Health District, went back to Phase 3, whereas the rest of the state is in Phase 4. The recommendations continue to be to follow social distancing, wear face masks in public, stay home when sick, and frequent hand washing, which are consistent with recommendations we've been sharing with the public from the, the city, what we're hearing from Panhandle Health District as well. Hey, Melissa. Financial impacts, we've been talking about this regularly at our meetings, and we've kind of reached an important benchmark for the state in terms of timelines for the fiscal year, which has implications for local jurisdictions, including the city of Sandpoint. So yesterday, June 30th, was the close of the state fiscal year. The year closed with a balanced budget and a projection of 100 to 150 million in surplus revenues over what was anticipated for the year. So we had been receiving notice over the last several months from the state to expect declines in revenue-sharing amounts, and we may see that, we may see that change going into the next fiscal year based from projections we have previously been given. He did specifically note that sales tax revenues for the state exceeded the budget by approximately $3.2 million, and this is fairly consistent with what we've seen in terms of sales tax trending at the local level and have reported to council. Again, through June 30th, we are still seeing at the local level our local option sales tax trending at or above budget, so we've seen kind of ups and downs with that, but overall, year-to-date for the fiscal year, we're trending actually a bit over what we had budgeted for local option sales tax revenues. Our resort city tax, as reported by Sarah over the last couple of months, has actually been trending below budget, so we are currently at 20% lower than typically what we're seeing year-to-date, budget year to budget year, which amounts to about a $40,000 reduction from what we are typically receiving. I would note that 60% of our resort city tax collections are for the period of June to September, so 60% of what we collect over a fiscal year, we're collecting at, again, those peak tourist months. So in terms of what we're seeing for trending with resort city tax, we'll have to continue to watch that very closely as we move into the next few months and kind of our peak tourist season to see what those implications will be for the full fiscal year. Again, a reminder for council and the public regarding both of these sales tax, or both of these tax revenues, these are resort city taxes. Our local option sales tax is specifically tied to our Memorial Field project, and so we are on trend with what we budgeted for that project in terms of anticipated revenues and expenses. The resort city tax is, that's referenced, and the second is our hotel motel tax, so that is a voter-approved tax based on hotel motel bookings and short-term rental stays. Specifically, the dollars received through the hotel motel tax go to support primarily our public safety services, so police, fire, our community resource officers, some limited amount for our... So police, fire, our community resource officers, some limited amount for our lifeguard program in the parks, but primarily public services when we're seeing, as the chief reported earlier, an uptick with overtime costs and general activity in the summertime as a result of the increased number of tourists we see in the area. We do, I want to talk a little bit about CARES Act funding and impacts for the city of Sandpoint. We do have a set aside by the state of CARES Act funding specifically for the city in the amount of $299,600. We have incurred approximately $30,000 in expenses to date, which have been primarily in the public safety realm. They've been related to PPE equipment, sanitization equipment that we've had to purchase, signs, but primarily around PPE equipment, sanitation supplies that are across the city benefiting all of our city departments. So that's sanitization equipment and supplies for police, for fire, as well as at the front desk disposable masks that we have available for the public. So those types of costs, we've had some limited costs related to improvements in technology. So related to our cameras so that people can effectively participate in our meetings remotely, as well as our move from our old platform to the Zoom platform for our meetings, which I think we would all agree is working much more effectively for our, our meetings. What we are looking for and recommending to council as we move forward with the budgeting process, council will recall that there was an allocation, council voted allocation of $10,000 that went to support economic development efforts for our struggling businesses. That was through the Bonner County Economic Development Corporation. They have allocated most of those funds. We'll be coming back to do a report to city council here in the next four weeks on the allocation of those funds. But there already is discussion about the need for probably a second round and potentially a larger amount of funding for our businesses because we've already seen over the last several weeks, some openings, some closings that have had to occur due to positive cases. So as we look in how we're going to weather this COVID pandemic in the fall and into the winter months, when a lot of the federal aid and the aid that was available to businesses and employees is beginning to dry up and sunset, how can we help our local small businesses sustain? So we will be recommending an additional $40,000 allocation for that program to support, to support businesses and needs going into the fall and winter months. And again, this will be included in the budget for the next fiscal year to be presented to council next month. We have, will continue to recommend a set aside for public safety needs. So these dollars are available to assist local governments with hazard pay if needed for first responders, overtime costs for first responders, sanitization, cleaning, equipment and supply needs. And it is too early at this point when we're just beginning to see increases here unfortunately in our county to really understand what those impacts could be for us as we move forward in months. So we are, are again, looking at a recommendation of a second, set aside for unforeseen expenses on the public safety front. And finally, an additional allocation for significant remote online technology improvements we need here at the city moving forward in order to effectively function in the case of us needing to have the ability to function from home, as well as addressing some of our needs here that are, still have not been addressed effectively in terms of the sound, our video system to ensure that if we need to make changes in terms of public participation onsite, that we are most effectively providing for public involvement, public participation in city government as we move forward into fall and winter months. One of the other challenges that we have is just relative to this room, the design, our AV equipment and overflow as we're seeing even tonight's meeting. Our rooms, our facilities were never designed, not for local government, not for any governments, not for our private businesses, for these new recommendations we're all living with around social distancing, which is making it harder and harder for us to really accommodate the public, both those who want to participate electronically, as though, as well as those who want to participate in person in our meetings. So for members of the public who are watching this online, we have about 15 seats available in our council chambers to accommodate public who want to come in and participate. And we have overflow out into our lobby and outside. And for the public then who cannot come into the room, they're trying to watch off of their cell phones. They're trying to do whatever they can with mobile devices to actively be able to hear, participate in this meeting tonight. So there are improvements that are needed on that front relative to our Wi-Fi, relative to other monitors and things that we could accommodate overflow for this meeting, as well as for others. When we think about our public hearings, for example, not just before council, but for planning and zoning, it is important that we have public participation in those hearings and provide those opportunities. And we are hearing from community members that many of them do not want to participate electronically. They want to have that opportunity to have that face-to-face dialogue and participation here. It's at, at our city facility. So looking at ways on how we can accommodate that. Finally, relative to the CARES Act funding, this goes back to a notice of intent that council had approved at a previous meeting, providing for participation in the state's property tax relief program to benefit property owners in our next fiscal year. That total amount with our allowed 3% and foregone for the city of Sandpoint is just under $139,000. But that will provide much needed property tax relief for, for our citizens. And we had another update about next steps relative to that program from the governor's office, including our letters of intent that are due on July 17th. And council has already authorized staff to submit for participation in this program. In terms of city response, just kind of a quick overview, again, as we have gone through the various stages. And our state, when we were under a stay-at-home order, our city facilities were closed to the public. Nearly all of our staff was working remotely. We have obviously essential staff that is, is not able to work remotely. They're either police, which are generally most of them out in their, their cars, fire who, when they're not responding to a call, those on shift are here at city facilities. And some of the members of our leadership staff, limited number, were working here at city hall, but the majority of our staff was working remotely. We operated with rotating shifts for our staff, particularly out at our treatment plants, where we have a very limited number of staff here at the city. And we must, we must, it is essential for public health and safety that we have a functioning water treatment plant and a sewer treatment plant. And we are required to have operators in, at those facilities to make them work. So we worked with rotating shifts in case we had an outbreak amongst staff, that we had staff who were not coming in contact with one another, who would be able to service those plants. We went to electronic meetings only across the board. So our P&amp;Z meetings, our city council meetings, and this was via resolution by the city council. Our playgrounds and public restrooms were closed. We weren't taking any facility or field reservations other than moving into stage one. And there were no special events, so we were issuing any permits at that period in time. During stage, stage one, we, our city facilities, this isn't really clear. Our city facilities were reopened, but they remain closed to the public except in designated public service areas. And we continue to operate that way for the protection and safety of our staff. Again, we have a very small city staff. And if we had a COVID outbreak that came through here, broke out through our staff, or we had an infected person come in, was unknown and later had a positive diagnosis, then we would be in the position of having to shut down city facilities for disinfection and cleaning, much like we've seen happen at some of our local area businesses. But it becomes really challenging and problematic for us from a government standpoint because that means closing down our police department here. And we do have people coming and going investigations here in city hall. So we have taken measures and continue to stay with those measures in order to protect our city staff and maintain our level of public service provided through all of our city divisions. We remained with rotating shifts, but did reopen our public restrooms. We began taking field reservations for local play only and following the recommendations of group size under 10. We began requiring COVID liability waivers as we were reopening our facilities, field reservations, and looking to move into issuing public, special event permits. And we brought on some temporary staff who are dedicated to doing daily disinfection through our facilities for public safety, staff safety, including our public restrooms within our parks. So we continue to maintain that temp seasonal staff in place. And again, we're using CARES Act funding to support those services. In stage two, we didn't have much change in terms of what we were doing respective to our facilities and our services, other than we ended our rotating shifts with our staff. In stage three, according to the resolution that was passed by city council and the amendment to the resolution, our city meetings were then opened back up to public in-person participation with social distancing. Our playgrounds were reopened. We began issuing event permits for up to 50 people. And we began taking facility reservations again. So when you think facility reservations, that's community hall. And we do occasionally have reservations from outside groups for city council chambers, for CPR classes and things of the like here. It's fairly limited that we do have some of that that occurs here in city hall. And finally, we're in stage four. And so we continue with all of the reopening that we've done in stage three and have begun issuing event permits without number limitations. Again, under the state guidelines in stage four, it allowed for events without a limitation on size. And so people have had questions about the event permits for Fourth of July and other events. And again, due to us being stage four, we haven't had a limitation on size number with events. But I would note that we continue to require COVID liability waivers for event organizers. And as you saw with the discussion tonight with the Fourth of July event organizers, we require that they adhere to social distancing guidelines. And we are working with event organizers, both, we've seen it with Fourth of July. And council's also had reports from the, the farmer's market, Sandpoint Farmer's Market Group on, on precautions they have undertaken. Tournaments and games are allowed in stage four. So we typically up to this stage have not allowed those with athletic groups and events, but they are allowed under the reopening plan in stage four. Relative to regional events, there have been some questions about activities for Fourth of July. And there's been much concern that Sandpoint would be the only one in the region with Fourth of July activities or Fourth of July fireworks and concern that that's going to pull in people from Spokane and all over who are looking for Fourth of July activities. They're all going to be gathering up here in Sandpoint. There's been much discussion on cancellation of events throughout the region. But as you can see through this list, we have seen happen in areas throughout the region where traditional events with traditional organizers have been canceled. We have seen other groups come in and in some cases without city permits, move ahead with events. So there were announcements about events being canceled in Coeur d'Alene, for example. The Chamber of Commerce canceled their traditional parade, as well as their fireworks in Coeur d'Alene. But we saw an announcement the last couple of days about the Coeur d'Alene Hotel holding their own fireworks and other groups in the area doing those in post falls. We've seen reports of fireworks now being held at State Line Speedway. We saw fireworks canceled down in Spokane. And then in the last couple of days, we've seen announcements about drive-in fireworks displays there at the Indians Ball, Ball Club out at Liberty Lake and some other locations as well. So we are not the only game in the region, I guess, for Fourth of July activities. We're seeing them begin to pop up in, in other areas as well. I think that's what I've got kind of for an overview. Again, where we do stand right now relative to public meetings is based on the resolution and the amendment there to pass by council. Currently, our public meetings remain open to the public to attend in person. We had discussions as we were working through planning and what it looked like as we moved through stages, that things may look different if we were to see community spread here in Bonner County and particularly in Sandpoint. You'll notice tonight that staff, city staff that are present at the meeting tonight are wearing masks except for when we're speaking. So the mayor requested that we implement that administratively in the last 24 hours as we saw an uptick of cases. And again, for the health and safety of our staff and with following best recommendation practices from the health district, we have not determined at this time that we're going back to closure of city hall generally or public coming in or requiring the public to wear masks. We continue to monitor on a daily basis administratively kind of what's happening and don't necessarily have a trigger point for when things change for us with staff. It's an ongoing conversation for us administratively, considering risk, what the needs of our departments and divisions are. So it's kind of an ongoing conversation. Again, relative to meetings, that and event permits, we're operating overall under the guidance given to us by council relative to meetings. And unless there is different guidance given from council, event permits, right now we're issuing permits for, for events. But again, it is, those are caveated that we are remaining in a stage four. So that's update that I have for council. We did list this and made an amendment to the agenda for a possible action item in case council wanted to take a different action.
Thank you for that Jennifer. Yeah, go ahead.
You said that people from Washington and Coeur d'Alene were coming here for the Fourth of July. They're already here.
Yeah, yeah.
Just so you know.
Yes, we have a discussion on license plates every day.
They're just laying it out. They're here. They came early.
Yeah, we mostly see Coeur d'Alene, we mostly see Coeur d'Alene and Washington plates when we go downtown or down at city.
They're spending money. That's good.
And they're all looking for camping spots.
Yep.
And just a reminder, it is July 1st. We have made it halfway through 2020, everybody. So well done. This is our.
What's, what's next?
So actually I, I had asked that this, that this potential action item be included as in the amended agenda because, you know, when we were, when we were, I think we were probably midway through phase two, when maybe even phase one, when Lions pulled out of Fourth of July. We were maybe in phase two when this other group stepped up and wanted to do the event. At that time, it was looking like stage four was going to be complete by now. Actually, by July 1st, we would be over this whole thing. And we went four cases, no community spread all through March, April, May. We made it till a couple of weeks ago when we had our first community spread. And we go from seven to 25 in less than two weeks. And then I see, you know, other communities around us that have pulled the event and/or have, you know, continued to have discontinued. have, you know, continued to have discontinued gatherings of over 50 people. Ada County last week reverted back to stage three. And so I thought it was important for us as a council to have an updated COVID update and reconsider where we're at and kind of reassess, you know, back when we were talking about this two months ago, we were really, you know, kind of keeping our eye out for that potential community spread. And that was going to be a real trigger for us as far as, you know, kind of ratcheting up our protocols as a city in terms of how we wanted as a community to respond to this. Well, we're well into that now. And I think now it's, you know, it's a good time for us to reconsider this. So that's why I have, you know, at the very least, you know, advise that at least internally amongst staff that we set the good example and take all the necessary protocols that we can take internally. But, you know, as we look outward, you know, what does that mean in terms of our athletic events, our sporting events, our parks and rec activities, our public events and permits? You know, do we want to, you know, go to the next level there as well? And so I wanted to invite a conversation with all of the council and in the public to kind of reassess where we're at and, you know, what our threshold is going to be for, you know, continuing to ratchet this thing up if at all. And in preparation for this, I want you all to know that I reached out to, I reached out to both the governor, of course, I was in the governor's call today, and I reached out to Panhandle Health District. And I will say, as Jennifer mentioned, you know, the governor made it very clear over and over again that at this point, you know, he's handing it over to the local health departments, district by district, to make their own decisions as far as how they want to move forward. Obviously, Ada County, you know, they pulled back. They're the leading, they're the district that is leading with the most number of cases in the state. Second is Canyon County, which is right next door. And then third is Cootney County. So we're picking up steam. We didn't make the top three, but we're definitely in the top 10. And so, you know, I think it warrants definitely a conversation. Speaking to Laura Wayland, who's the executive director for the Panhandle Health Department, you know, she made it very clear that, you know, they're basically monitoring for four data points. One is number of community spread cases, active cases, number of cases that have impacted healthcare workers, life care facilities or long-term, long-term life care facilities, and then number of ICU beds or beds and ventilators that have been essentially taken up. So they're, you know, and obviously, you know, as we all know, politics are at play here now. And so ultimately, it comes down to a board decision, the Panhandle Health District Board that's going to decide whether or not District One, our district, is going to, you know, stay where we're at, revert back to stage three, or make any other, you know, recommended changes throughout the district. And then, you know, we as a city would then, you know, in turn follow suit, as would other agencies and other jurisdictions, I would presume. So, you know, she made it pretty clear that, you know, while, and I know all of you have probably been getting the same emails, I know you have been getting the same emails that I've been getting and maybe other ones and other phone calls too. Obviously, people are really concerned about this. We're hearing about this a lot. And obviously, it's, you know, a balance between, you know, do we, you know, we obviously want to have the life that we're here to live and we want our businesses to be successful and we want to, you know, not have our lives impacted. But obviously, we also want to protect the health and safety of our community. So this is a difficult balance. And, you know, I find that we're kind of in the position that we were in, you know, three months ago when we were deciding, you know, when the governor hadn't taken the initiative and hadn't taken a leadership position on this at that time. And we were, as a city, deciding, what are we going to do? And we were, you know, as we were then, we're talking to Panhandle Health District and we're, you know, trying to make the best decision for our community. So that's where we're at again. And I wanted to hear each of your thoughts in terms of, you know, what do you think? How do you feel about this? And what do you think is the best path forward?
Yeah.
Mayor? I think one of the first things we should do is encourage people to wear masks. I mean, I know it seems, you know, it's, maybe people don't want to, but I think that's one of the first things we need to do. Because of what I do for a living with the Chamber of Commerce and talking to businesses, I really would hesitate in going back to have businesses closed down because quite frankly, I was at a, I was speaking this morning at the Sandpoint Rotary Club. And there are those businesses that if there is another shutdown, they will be gone and more than we could even possibly think. And so that concerns me a lot because our economy would, it would really fail. And so I think the first, probably the first step is just encouraging people to wear masks, to be respectful of one another. You know, some of the businesses, some wear them, some don't. And that's a lot of the calls I get. I get a lot of the calls saying, you know, I thought businesses were supposed to wear masks. And it depends on the protocol that they submitted to the health department, really, and whether the health department approved it or not. And so I am concerned as well. I mean, I shared with you my issues that I have and why I wear a mask, but I can't make everybody wear a mask. And so I just think if we were role models in that and if we can try and encourage people to wear masks, I think that's a good step. I am very hesitant to go back any further thinking about all of the businesses in town. So that's my input.
And how do you feel about, and I hear what you're saying regarding, you know, encouraging people to wear masks, but as far as the city continuing to, you know, support and sponsor parks and rec related activities, obviously, people aren't wearing masks when they're playing, you know, athletics and also, you know, parades, public gatherings that are permitted, those kinds of events?
Well, I think, I feel that we can encourage people. I also think it's a personal responsibility. You have to be accountable for myself. You know, I've walked in the parade for 24 years with the Angels over Sandpoint, and we are not doing it this year because of COVID, because most of us are over 60. But that's our personal choice to do that. That's not, you know, and it is people, we can't, it is people's personal choice if they want to participate. I'm just asking people to be thoughtful and wear a mask. It has, you know, I was accosted the other day by someone and it's like, is it not my freedom to wear a mask if I want to to protect myself? So I think it all gets confused, but I certainly don't want our economy to go backwards. And as for public gatherings, I was reading in a science journal this morning about outdoor events, you know, there's a little less of a, unless we're crammed in there. And so, you know, and you heard Ron saying that they're going to try and socially distance. And I mean, that's all we can really do is try. So, I mean, in the, you know, unless the governor pulls us all back completely, I'm really hesitant to do that. You know, I think take personal responsibility for yourself and your family and.
Okay. Anyone else? Yeah.
Kay, I just want to say I appreciate and respect your attitude towards that and be respectful towards others. And personal responsibility is a big one. And I think you hit that on the head. I believe that the city we live in, this is my opinion, it's going to attract, already has a lot of people from out of town. My concern is more of the council chambers aspect of, I would not personally like to, I think this is completely healthy personally. And I believe if somebody doesn't want to be exposed, they can self-quarantine themselves. I believe this is a very helpful community. If anybody wants to self-quarantine and they need food, I'd be happy to get them food. But I believe there's a lot of people that would like to come to council meetings. I think it was very painful for us when we first were meeting online. I did not like that one bit. I understand, Jennifer, you mentioned upgrading things and of course, that's always good. But personally, I, as an individual, appreciate the accountability of seeing people's faces. I'm a human being. I'm corruptible. So when I see people in the audience being here together to speak out towards me or any of us, I believe accountability is important. So I personally think this is a healthy environment. I would not like to see us go back. If you want to stay home, I see John and Deb in there and I respect that very much. But I personally like the face-to-face. I like the accountability. I think it's good for the public as well to be able to communicate towards us. So that's my opinion. I mean, I don't know how we as a community, I mean, go to Walmart, go to Home Depot, go to Super One, I mean, Safeway, it's, I get they're trying to do the best they can and I respect that and also liability. But, you know, it's funny when it's six feet apart this way, but not this way. And it's very difficult. And I believe that those who are vulnerable and those who want to quarantine, as I understand state law, would be you quarantine, you do your thing, please ask for help. I believe this community would be happy to help you, whether you're Democrat, Republican, who cares? We're here to help. And I believe, I know I am, and reach out to me. You can find my email on the city's standpoint website. I believe we all got emailed by the whole community. So it's there. So please, that's my opinion. I would, I like to be here. I like to see faces. I like to be, have that accountability. It's healthy for myself as well. So that's my two cents.
So Joel, specific to the question of city sanctioned, you know, parks and rec activities and public permitted parades and public gatherings?
My personal, like, trying to think about this logically, of course, I could be wrong, is people are coming to Sandpoint because of our lake, our community regardless. I actually think being 32 cases, 25 active, community spread, that's of course, understanding, testing now, not everybody was tested in the beginning. Who knows what community spread was there, is my opinion. It could have been way more than we know now. I think that we're in a really healthy spot. And I know the concern of overwhelming the healthcare system. But I personally believe that if parents want to let their kids go do that and they can do the best they can to social distancing, it's no different really than going to the beach, seeing it crowded like that. And I don't think it's a problem personally. Big on self-responsibility. You stay home if you want, don't let your kids do it if you don't want them to, but.
Okay. Councilwoman? Rule?
I have some relatively strong opinions about it. I sent a letter to the governor requesting that we go back to phase three. I sent a letter to, well, actually, they were emails, to Panhandle Health District. And I would say openly that one of my frustrations was that the governor said the health district was going to handle it. And then when I sent my email to the health district, they said, no, we're not the ones that are making the decisions. Now, I've heard differently at council tonight, but I just sent those emails on Monday. So I don't appreciate the confusion there. It seems like maybe the buck is being passed around. I have great compassion for all our businesses, but if we spiral so far out of control, then we will shut down to an even greater degree. I think that it's, I appreciate personal responsibility, but there are many people out there that are not showing a personal responsibility for the others around them. And I do believe that we are headed down the path of overwhelming our healthcare systems. And then we will all suffer. We are exponentially increasing in cases across the state right now. So I feel that it is imperative that we make some changes. That's why I'm not at council meeting tonight. I do like to be accountable. That's why I'm still sitting here at this meeting. I don't think it makes me less accountable because I am not in the council chambers. But I am worried about our town and how if we don't take action now that the economic viability is going to suffer to even a larger degree. And then on top of that, we may lose some of our residents. So I have a stronger and much different opinion from, I feel, my fellow council members. But I would like to go on record saying that I do believe we need to shut down our recreation and return to phase three and close our council meetings to the public at this time and allow them to participate remotely until we move through this pretty huge spike in cases. People may say, oh, we only have a couple here in Bonner, but we are so closely attached to the people that live in Cootney County. Many, many people every day commute back and forth from our town to Cootney. My front office staff lives in Coeur d'Alene. She comes here every single day. So I think it's short-sighted to believe that just because we only have a few cases here, that this will not blow up significantly. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other?
Good luck. Like, John?
Councilman Darling? Yeah?
You're on mute. Oh, there you go.
I'm here. I'd just like to say I'm very excited for celebration of our Independence Day coming up. I can't wait to see the people out on the sidewalks at the parade and at the fireworks. I wholeheartedly support this, these permits and these activities. And I praise the individuals, but the great lengths to make these happen for our community. I'm very respectable about our residents' concerns. I love its personal responsibility. I'm a very big advocate of that. If you are concerned, please, away, take all precautions to protect yourself. I am a proponent of the city parks and rec, getting the kids out in the fields playing since they've been sheltered away for such a long time. I think it helps build healthy immune system and supports healthy lifestyles with the sporting programs that we have in place. And as far as council chambers, I will definitely be there next meeting. And I greatly appreciate the opportunity to be able to have these meetings remotely, which gives us that personal responsibility concept, so.
Thank you, Councilman Darling. Appreciate that. Councilman Groth?
I deeply respect Councilwoman Rule. Go ahead. She had her hand raised. Go ahead. Deb?
I just wanted to make a comment that my opinions, when I, strictly along the lines of this being a health issue, I do not view it as any sort of political issue, one way or the other. I base my opinions on the health of individuals, no matter who they are and what their opinions are.
Thank you, Counselor. I think we can all agree to that. Counselor Groth?
Deeply respect Councilwoman Rule's opinions and her thoughts and her additions to this. I'm in agreement with Councilwoman McAllister and Aspirro and Darling. Let's get it going.
Okay. Okay. I think, so what I'm hearing is that there's no interest in the council this time to take any action on this item. Okay. And, yeah, you'll get a chance. Hang on a sec, please. So before we get there, thank you for reminding me, by the way. I think, you know, what would be the best going forward is to continue to have these updates into the future and then we can continue to just check in here and see, just keep taking the temperature and see where we're at. And I would advise anyone out there in the public, you know, I know we all continue to get a lot of emails and comments from concerned citizens. I would encourage you to reach out to the board of the Panhandle Health District. They are ultimately the ones that are providing the guidance for health protocols within our jurisdiction. And they're ultimately going to be the ones that are, you know, providing real leadership on this issue. So they are, they, I'm sure, would welcome your input and your comments. But I would, again, reiterate that they're really, you know, following those data points. And until we start to see any significant change in those four data points, I wouldn't expect any action from PHD at this point. Any last comments from council at this point?
Keep the temperature thing, that was a good one.
That was nice.
Yeah.
Okay. So at this point, I'd like to open this up to public comment. If there's anyone who would like to speak on this issue, you can please come forward to the podium. And again, the same rules applies to your name for the record and whether or not you reside in the city. And you have three minutes, please.
My name's Kay Jorison. I reside outside of the city. On this mask topic, we're not guaranteed a pathogen-free society. Our healthcare systems are laying nurses off. I have friends trying to pick up shifts. I have many who have lost their jobs. The hospitals are empty. All over, I have friends all overstaying the same thing. I would hope that this council and our community would research the dangers of actually wearing the masks. There are many studies out there, and if your mask works, why do I need one? And where are the hazmat deposits for these? They should be all over town. They're worn inappropriately, and now it went from mask to a face covering. Has everybody noticed that? Regardless of if it's effective or not, a face covering, cover your face? I'm not covering my face. We cannot quarantine healthy people. Sorry, I'm shaky. This topic is really. The community needs to take it upon themselves to build their immune systems, to live healthy life. We live in Idaho where there's beautiful, fresh air, clean water. We should take it upon ourselves to be healthy. And if you're vulnerable and you choose to wear a mask, you can do those things. You can choose to do things differently. That's your choice. We cannot mandate that anybody put something over their face, lacking their oxygen, stopping their immune system from functioning, breathing and recycled air, goes on and on. We cannot shut down our small businesses, and we are leaving our community to funnel through these big box stores. I was so disgusted the, the other day at JCPenney's. They had carts in front of all of the dressing rooms except for one, and they wanted 15 people to funnel into one dressing room to try things on, wait in line for 30 minutes or more. Does it make any sense? Where's our common sense? We're funneling into Walmart. What about all our beautiful stores downtown? There would be less people in Walmart if we were using our small businesses downtown, right? There'd be less people using that one facility to try things on if all the facilities were open. It's not good for human action, human interaction, like Joel said, face to face. My kids are so sad to go downtown and see everybody in these masks, masks. They want to see their mouth. They want to see them talk. They want to communicate. They want to see a smile. We can't even look into somebody's eyes anymore and, and, and see who this person is. They're so sad with these masks on. Take your mask off, breathe the fresh air. It doesn't like, it doesn't make any sense if we're standing six feet apart this way versus this way. We're all standing in line. We're breathing the same air in this room. Those people that are Sardines out there should be in here. It's our community. It's how it should be. We don't need to live in fear. So I just ask that you research this mask topic, look into it further. There's an agenda behind it, and it's really sad. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please come forward.
Hey, just, my name's Daniel Radford. I live in Cootney. So COVID has spread through droplets. It's not just people. So primarily people sitting in close proximity is going to be a really big issue. I just kind of want to talk about Fourth of July. I think encouraging a little distance between families or groups or not is going to be imperative. But really, I don't want to see the mask thing be enforced through some sort of like legal thing, or I think fining people for not wearing a mask is really not going to work. Arresting people is also just kind of counterproductive. If you think about the whole process of an arrest, you're in close proximity, you go to jail, close proximity in a lot of places. Yeah, so I think the onus is really on businesses to keep the people who use them safe. And I would really like to see some sort of affirmation of the need to wear masks, the benefits of wearing masks come from the city council. But that being said, I don't really want us to penalize or fine people or arrest them for not doing that. I think that's a ridiculous, not a good direction to go. Yeah, I think that's it.
Thanks for those comments. Yeah. And for the record, nobody up here is proposing that we mandate masks. And, and I think, you know, Councilwoman McAllister's comment was just encouraging people, such as setting a good example. And I would also say that we did post a statement on our Facebook page, I think, and our website. And we will continue to support the protocols that are provided by the Panhandle Health District as, as those are the best, that's the best guidance for protection of ourselves and our community that we have to go on. So we are, we are putting information out there and encouraging people to follow those protocols. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this topic? Please come forward.
Hi, I'm Michelle Mandoff, and I live in Sandpoint. And thank you for talking about this important subject. The one thing that we haven't heard through all of this is building the immune system with antiviral herbs, vitamins, minerals, foods, and that the sunshine does kill the COVID. So as far as enforcing the social distancing and everyone wearing masks, which you already said that isn't going to happen, it's important to know if we're outside getting the fresh air and the sun is shining, there's little to no risk. And that's all I have to say on that subject.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? Is there anyone online? Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, we have several people who have their hands raised online. I don't know if they wish to speak on this topic, but I, we will have to check with them.
Okay, I will leave it to you.
Okay. Alicia Abbott?
I was wanting to speak on another matter, so it's not relevant to this point of the meeting. So you can move on to the next speaker.
Thank you. Michael Waldrop?
Michael Waldrop, are you with us?
Bridget Von Kahl?
Hi, yes, my name is Bridget Von Kahl. I reside outside of Sandpoint. I am a healthcare, I'm in the healthcare professional industry. And I think it's important, there's a lot of discussion about personal responsibility and protecting ourselves and protecting our families. And it's a very individualistic view. It's really important that emphasis is placed on the whole of the community and keeping the entire community and the residents safe. This isn't just impacting and killing immunocompromised people. This can attack and kill anybody, including children, including healthy people. Even if it doesn't kill you, it's going to have a very serious repercussion on the community. And without having at least some kind of mandate, it definitely does put the community at a far greater risk of everything continuing as it looks like it's continuing, having everything continue at a predictable pace as we can see things happening. Businesses may be lost because the owners get sick and they have medical bills that they can't pay back, or even serious repercussions like that on community members. So it's very important that when speaking to the community and comprising a campaign of encouraging the community to wear masks and social distance appropriately and engage in low-risk behaviors and actions like going on hikes and going outside and staying really far apart from people, which is great. Parks and rec is, that's what it's great for, rather than the retail kinds of things, as has been discussed. It's hard to control that. A lot easier to have social distancing outside. But yeah, you're not just protecting your family, you're protecting the community. And if there is a strong point of protecting the economy and making sure the economy and the residents don't suffer the consequences of either shutting back down or becoming very sick, then it is really important to emphasize that that is totally possible just by following CDC guidelines, following actual science, and actually well-founded principles. And that's, that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Appreciate it.
Matt Nikke?
Yeah, thank you. I'm, my name's Matt Nikke. I live in the city of Sandpoint. And I just want to echo and show my support for Councilwoman, Councilwoman Rule's comments on this. I really support what she had to say. I think I agree that personal responsibility is important, but like the last speaker noted, we have a social responsibility to each other. And personal responsibility only works if you have full knowledge, right? So lots of people who have COVID are asymptomatic. And so you could full well think you're safe and healthy and, and not going to endanger anyone and go out in public, go out into a public event and end up hurting other people without knowing it. So I think when you say you support personal responsibility, you have to be aware that this is a very unique challenge we're dealing with right now. And we don't, we don't all have the knowledge of whether we're healthy and safe and that we won't impact other people. And the last thing I'd note is that I think the countries and the counties and the states that have most effectively dealt with this issue have learned, we've learned this lesson, that you act quickly when the numbers are small, and you don't wait until it gets out of control. And I'm very surprised at this council, at the council members who seem to have forgotten that lesson already. Our numbers are very small, right? Well, they're small but growing quickly. And I think we should heed the lesson we've already learned, that if you act quickly from the beginning, you save the community and the economy as well, a lot down the road. And I think we need to think to the future because we all know the fall is going to be worse. We didn't even get through the first peak. And so I think if you're thinking about your kids participating in school and sports in the fall, I think we would do well to take precaution now while it's easier to handle and prepare to have, you know, a really great fall. You know, I think we can all sacrifice a little bit while the numbers are small right now, in the hopes that we can protect, you know, the economy longer term and protect ourselves longer term. So I just encourage the council to rethink their position on this because the way the numbers are trending, I think it's pretty dangerous. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments, Mr. Nikke. Appreciate it. Do you have more, Clerk?
Allison Johnson?
Thank you. My name is Allison Johnston. I live outside of Sandpoint in Clark Fork. I would like to once again express my, or in addition, express my support for Councilwoman Rule on her very well-reasoned comments on exactly what we're facing. I agree. I definitely hear the pain and the, and the exhaustion that people feel from having to live in this way that we are so unused to, and the desire to be able to enjoy what summer has a sense of normalcy for us. We, I think, very much desire to return to what we enjoyed without, I think, even really appreciating it to the degree which we might now. With that, however, to understand exponential growth, I agree with the previous speaker, as the previous two speakers, we have to follow real science. We have to be able to take action now. I am extremely disappointed with the idea that we would just play, play a game of sitting and waiting while we know what the outcome is going to be because we see lessons around the world. We see lessons from other states. And I believe it's a penny wise, pound foolish approach. You are going to be ruining your fall if you do not take action now. I agree with the idea very much of a social responsibility. It sounds, and I would like to fundamentally say, you know, for those who are worried about mask wearing, please check your sources. Really start to look at what mask wearing is about. For me, I wear a mask because I have respect for you and your health. Wearing a mask, unless I have an N95 mask, it's not going to protect me. So when I wear a mask, it is because I care about you. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments, Ms. Johnson. Appreciate it.
Michael Waldrop?
I wanted to speak during the general forum. Is that still possible?
There will be another opportunity for that, Mr. Waldrop, at the end of our agenda, which we've got a couple more items to power through here. So it might be a little while.
Okay, I'll try and stay patient.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all, Mr. Mayor.
That's all. Okay. Last chance on this topic. We're moving on, going once, going twice. Next up is item under old business, an update from our city engineer Dan Tannock on the War Memorial Field project, lighten it up a little bit. Got a double header tonight.
Evening. Wanted to provide a project update on War Memorial Field. We achieved an important milestone last week when Hellis Construction, the turf and softball installer, accepted the gravel base and began installing their separation fabric and the chalk pad. And very soon, very soon the turf surface as well. Also excited to say that the field drainage system performed as expected today with the heavy rain. Still checking out there. It thought also important to note that historically, had we experienced a rain like this with the, our natural surface, the original natural surface, we may have been looking at several days of an unplayable surface. And this is really going to make a difference for a generation of kids in this community. Perimeter fencing started going up today. Our new LED lights are installed and now functional. And overall, J7 contracting has just done a really great job. They've been a pleasure to work with. And all parties, the contractors, subcontractors, have committed to delivering this project on schedule. We also thought it was important to let the council and community know that we have been impacted by COVID on this project. Our natural infill that council selected, the natural rubber infill, it turns out is not available. Supply chain issues have rendered that availability at best uncertain into the future. So much so that Hellis may not even continue that product line anymore. But what we have been able to do is negotiate a $0 change order with J7 and Hellis Construction to switch to our second highest rated all-natural infill material, which was the cork with sand solution. So we have an option, and that's available in Seattle. It's a week out at any point in time. You may also recall that Phase One was intentionally limited in scope to provide only what was necessary for the festival and fall sports. That was just to make sure we were achieving our project schedule. And then Phase Two was going to pick up the spring sports elements, as well as the parking, boat launch, et cetera. Given that festival is now canceled for this year, we are now exploring the possibility of adding dugouts into this phase, working through design issues and getting some pricing from the contractors. What that would do is not only take advantage of working with a really good contractor we're working with currently, but also eliminate the need for another interim milestone within the Phase Two project. And we would essentially, you know, come into next spring with a facility that's ready for softball and baseball when their, when their seasons start. Speaking of Phase Two, that design was kicked off a week ago. We are still anticipating the Phase Two elements to be primarily parking, boat launch, and stormwater improvements. And we're anticipating that design completed late summer with bidding in September and award in October, and then a phase construction where we get elements done in the fall, and then come back in the spring and finish it out. And so that's still tracking as we initially ended. And as we did with Phase One, we will bring that back to council prior to going out to bid. So you can see all the project elements that are included in there. And if, if I may, I figured I'd maybe show you a few photos of the project. Just these kind of, just over the course of construction, maybe for those who haven't been able to see it. This first photo is the big T-Rex machine. So you may recall that because of our soft site soils, we decided to go with a cement-treated base on the entire field surface. And that field surface has butterfly to drain to the middle of the field. So this is, I believe, the first pass or two of the cement-treated base going down on the field. And that is about a foot thick in total. So we have a very firm foundation. So we have a very firm foundation for our field for future festival events, for the tractor trailers and RVs and everything that drive on that surface, as well as just other activities. Well, this photo shows essentially the finished cement treated base surface. You can start to see the drain where the spoil piles are in the middle. That's where the perforated drain that collects all the water that falls on the field surface drains to the middle will outfall across the parking lot. And what you see going in right here is a helical pier. So this was the solution we employed for the festival tent anchors. So there are six of these within the field surface that'll be accessed by a removable turf lid essentially. And these will provide anchor points for the festival tents when they resume their performances. This is a photo of the backstop wall for baseball. They just did a really good job of finished concrete work. I just wanted to throw that one in there. You can also see one of the new field lights in the back. Oh, and one other thing on here worth pointing out, these coiled up drains here, we'll see in a future photo, these are laid out across that cement treated base surface on 15 feet on center, and you can see them here. So that entire field surface, as the water drains through the turf, through the shock pad, onto the cement treated base surface will find its way into those flat drains. The flat drains take it into the perforated pipe down the middle of the field and outfall. And again, all of our percolation tests that were required as part of the project by an independent testing agency came out above what we needed to meet the specifications. So our field is performing quite well in that regard. Here's a photo of around the concessions building, existing football concessions, the new flatwork going in there to match the new field surfacing. So all that concrete into the restrooms and from the grandstands, et cetera, was replaced. This is just a little snapshot of the, one of the access boxes for the field goals. So the field goal post will bolt down into this and the hatch can close essentially around it when in use. When not in use, field goal post comes out and a solid turf lid essentially goes over the top of that. So even notice it's there. This kind of gives you an impression from the grandstands of the completed gravel surface, essentially ready for the turf installer to come in. You can see the little cones in the center of the field represent the tent anchor locations that are in the surface in the background. You can see this in the left side, you can see the softball backstop and those cones represent the access boxes to the bases that will set down, anchor into the turf. And then on the right side, you can see the same for baseball and also some of the new LED field lights as well. Here's a testing of one of the new field lights. And you can also see one of the baseball foul poles that are removable, just like the field goal posts. And the last photo I have at this point in time is the Hellis crew coming in. You can see that this is the shock pad that basically provides that fall protection in conjunction with the infill. So there's a geotextile fabric first, the shock pad, and then the turf goes on on top of that and the infill in the turf. So the infill in conjunction with the shock pad material provide the fall protection for the athletes. So yes, with that, happy to answer any questions, councillor, mayor, mayor.
Council, any questions?
I have the opportunity to drag by that a couple different times in the day and it's been, it's been great watching how it has improved and it's gone from, you know, deconstruction to these different phases. I'm glad, I'm very glad and appreciative of you and being a good guy and taking care of this. I know you're a big baseball fan, I know you're a sports fan. I'm having to watch my old baseball bloopers and just to get my fix. I am very excited for that field to be played on by the kids and everybody. So well done. Thank you.
And perhaps an inaugural, you know, city hall tournament, you know, to kick it off or something, you know, electives against staff or something like that. I know Jennifer.
One thing, Mayor, I forgot to point out, one of the photos, I just wanted to give kudos to Brody Durfee with Durfee Construction, who organized the volunteer effort to replace the victory bell through, I think, Friends Memorial and then some donated contractors' time and equipment and Brody's own sweat and his crew's time and energy, they replaced the victory bell. And it looks great if you haven't seen it. Very impressive.
Cool. Thanks for sharing. Any other questions from council? No? Thank you for that presentation. Appreciate it. Is there anyone in the public that would like to comment on this matter?
Good job.
All right, good job. Anyone online, clerk?
Mr. Mayor, I have a hand. Check and see if this is the item they wish to speak about. Lacy Robinson. Deborah Starks. No one else, Mr. Mayor?
Okay. Thanks. Thank you. Then the next item under Old Business is an update, again, from engineer Dan Tadic on the pavement condition assessment report we got back recently.
All right, everybody's favorite topic, asphalt, right? So as part of our multimodal transportation master planning effort, the city contracted with the NST Infrastructure Management Services to do a pavement assessment. They utilize a van, you may have seen it driving around town, looking very similar to this one, with, equipped with laser sensors that gets a objective quantification of pavement conditions. Historically, and not uncommon with a lot of communities, that's been a more subjective process where somebody with a notepad and, you know, rates it, you know, just driving each road section. This is a very objective analysis that looks at all the deformations, cracking, et cetera, and provides a much more data-driven analysis result. This was completed just last fall. So what ultimately that analysis provides is a pavement condition index for every street segment within the community. And that's a numerical index between 0 and 100 with 0 being very poor and 100 being excellent. Jump into the punchline a little bit, the city's Sandpoint average is pavement condition index or PCI was 61, which is right in line with industry standards where we want to be generally to say 60 to 65 is a good target. And also, on the positive side, 15% of our network is rated as excellent in that 85 to 100 pavement condition index category, which is in line with the recommended minimum level. Also introducing the topic of backlog. Backlog is defined as the very poor to poor roads that fall below a PCI of 40. The goals for most agencies are less than 10, but they give a realistic target of 12 to 15. Sandpoint is looking at 21%, or close to 21% backlog, which is a point where you gotta raise a little red flag. As the backlog approaches 20 and exceeds 20, the cost of that work just can balloon very quickly. So we're talking about full reconstructions rather than a grind and an overlay or just a surface treatment. So that's when your, the cost of your projects can get out of control. We'll come back to that in a bit. Before we look at the results, it's not important to touch on the methodology a little bit. Streets are typically prioritized by functional class, so arterios, collectors, and locals. What that really means is your traffic, you know, your arterial, see most of your traffic, then collectors, then local streets. So we try to prioritize them based on how much average daily traffic they're going to experience. When you look at some of these charts we're going to show you, they're going to present the effects of various funding levels on pavement condition index and backlog with always the benchmark of our historical funding patterns. And the pavement management system, this very robust spreadsheet that we received from, from these consultants is, is based on priority, not, not applying a worst to first solution. So what that means is we're not planning to go in and just replace the worst conditioned street in town, but rather we're trying to prevent that from happening. So we will go and do a more cost-effective treatment that prevents a street from reverting or deteriorating to a point where we need to do the more robust treatment before we go and replace the terrible, terrible conditioned street. So we'll talk about that a little more as well. Other topic to touch on is the costs that you're going to see don't include any ADA compliance or utility needs. So obviously, when we go to repave a street, we want to make sure that if there's a water main that needs to be replaced, we're doing that. Likewise, for water services, sewer lines, et cetera. And we are looking at that, rest assured. As far as ADA compliance, when you resurface the street, and this is beyond your simple maintenance, this isn't filling in potholes, but when you resurface the street by the Americans with Disabilities Act, you are required to bring your curb ramps up to ADA standards. So if there are no sidewalks on that street, you're not required to do anything. But if there are sidewalks and there are non-compliant ramps, you're required to make those ramps compliant. Or if there are sidewalks and there are no ramps, you're required to construct ramps. So none of these costs that you see include those elements and those all need to be further vetted. So into the nitty gritty details of it, this first chart here presents a 10-year look at the backlog we talked about where we're currently sitting above where we want to be versus annual budget. And, and so the first line, I guess I'll point you to, is our historical funding has been somewhere around the order of about quarter million dollars a year for pavement. So at those levels, if we continue that funding level over the next 10 years, what we'd expect to see is a backlog increasing to, essentially doubling to 42%, which is alarming, beyond alarming.
In what time scope?
Next 10 years. And at the same time, our pavement condition index, or our average pavement condition index across the city would drop from 61 to 50. So we'd be again below what industry norms or recommendations are. The next data point on here is, well, what if we just maintain our pavement condition index at the 61 essentially it's at now? Well, what this tells us, my mouse is disappearing here, what this tells us is that that would require close to $800,000 a year investment. And, and at the same time, we would also be increasing our backlog to almost 28%.
That's going from a historical 250 to nearly.
800. And again, these aren't considering utilities or ADA costs, these are just essentially your asphalt costs, treatment costs. Another way of looking at this would be to maintain the backlog. So rather than we're going to maintain our pavement condition average, we're going to maintain our backlog at the 20.8 it's at currently. Well, as you can see from, from the model, that would require close to a million dollars annual investment over the next 10 years. What that would also do is have a positive effect on pavement condition index where we'd go from a 61 average to a 65. So we'd be at the higher end of the recommended range of PCI. Our consultants, this was their conclusion, was that rather than locking in at the current backlog, bring the backlog down to 20%. So maybe a little higher than we'd still ideally be at, but if we, if we set our backlog goal at only 20% of the system, then that would require a shade over a million dollars annually. It would also have the positive effect of improving the pavement, average pavement condition index to 66 from where it is currently at 61. And the last data point on this spreadsheet.
And that would hold our, our.
That would bring our backlog down to 20 from just almost 21. So it's, it's not a huge departure from the maintaining where we're at on the backlog.
Okay.
There's also, the last approach is, is back to the target-driven backlog. So where they say 12 to 15 is a reasonable target range for, for an agency. If we, if we set our goal at that 15% backlog not to exceed, what we'd be looking at is close to $1.2 million investment annually with, but that, and that would also improve our average pavement condition index up to a 70. So we'd be doing really well overall in our, our streets as a whole. This next chart is largely the same information, just presented a different way. What we're looking at now is the pavement condition index on the, on the Y axis and the year and the X axis. Really, the only thing, I guess, worth pointing out here that's different than what we see previously, this is over the same term, this is a 10-year period, but they've added a couple data points, so the do nothing approach is added. So if we spent $0 on asphalt pavement maintenance over the next 10 years, we'd expect our pavement condition index to be, you know, 40, 42 maybe, just a shade over 40. So pretty significant reduction. And then the fix it all budget, so sky's the limit, we shake the money tree and we get whatever we wanted, we'd be looking at close to $16 million over the next 10 years. And then we'd be rock solid. You see your pavement condition index up here above 90 and then starts tapering off again as, as the surfaces age.
That's 16 million or 60?
16.
Okay.
So what does all this mean in terms of what's recommended for next year? So going into fiscal year '21, in your current draft budget was coming to you is a half million dollars in pavement maintenance. So we talked about the historical funding's been about 250. The fiscal year '20 budget did not include that 250 because we were waiting on these results so that we were spending those dollars wisely rather than kind of guessing at where the best way to spend that was. So that's really incorporating the two years into the one is essentially the way to look at it. So you see here, the, the projects highlighted, we've got a couple blocks of Spruce Street, we've got Jefferson and Hickory, we've got Ruth, and we've got Poplar. And those are all repaved. So those are completely removed the asphalt and put in three inches of new asphalt down. Noted on here is that on this two-block stretch of Ruth is, it directly aligns with a recommended project in our draft water master plan. We have a 50s, actually more than that, I wouldn't say 1950 or 60s vintage cast iron undersized diameter water main that's in that street that also has had two or three breaks in the last several years. So we would be replacing that in conjunction with this. And again, the cost you saw represented just the asphalt cost, not the utility or ADA costs. So the utility cost would obviously be covered by the enterprise fund. We also typically fund sidewalk improvements that could help supplement the ADA portions of some of these projects. We've spent some time looking mainly at our GIS information for the presence of sidewalk and need for ADA ramps on, for these full repave projects. There's really not much likely there, there might be a few ramps that we need to replace. These other, other color here, that's Division, and that's more of like a crack seal type treatment, but according to Americans with Disabilities Act, even that level of treatment still requires you to look at the ADA elements of the project. On this southern portion of Division here, I'm fairly confident there's no sidewalk there, no ADA elements to improve. We would need to take a closer look at the ramps on this stretch between Pine to the north to make sure that we're in compliance with ADA as the project moves forward. One other thing I wanted to share, just big picture, when we looked at the 10-year project list and funding plan, assuming, again, historical levels of funding, which have been that quarter million dollar range, and we can run any gambit of scenarios with the spreadsheet, it's a really high, high-profile, very impressive technology, but that, that's what everything's based on now, which is historical levels. We didn't have any other numbers to feed it. I think everybody's familiar with Cedar Street and the condition of Cedar Street, probably, well, just east of Lincoln, right? We heard about that in some public meetings recently. Everybody's familiar with Lake Street in front of City Hall here, not, not the best condition, certainly not the worst, but, you know, it looks like it could be resurfaced. Thought it was important to point out that neither of those projects would fall within the 10-year funding, following this logic based on the funding levels that, that have historically funded. historically funded streets at. So just as a kind of a point of reference for everybody to, to think about moving forward.
And a reminder that, that Cedar project, of course, that was before us here recently, that was, you know, one of the, one of the main points that was brought up by many.
Yeah.
So just on this-
Yeah. So with that, I guess I'll fill for any questions.
Yeah, I have a question. So if you had to fix an ADA ramp in front of a household, who would be responsible for that payment? Would that be the homeowner?
If it's, if it's the result of a capital project, the city would be the one.
Okay. That's what I figured, I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Cancel any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Dan, appreciate that. Is there anyone in the public that would like to comment on this matter? Anyone online?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Then with that, we will continue with the public forum portion of the meeting. So I know we had Mr. Waldrop that was online, is he still there?
Yes.
Okay. And I would remind anyone who's coming on to speak now, if you can keep your comments under three minutes, keep your comments from being personally derogatory, and please, for the record, state your name and whether or not you reside in the city.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
If I may give a little additional exception, if you're online, if you wish to speak during this second round, if you would, please raise your hand.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Michael Waldrop?
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Mr. Mayor, council members, my name is Michael Waldrop, I've been in Sandpoint since 1977, longer than all of you. I support the Second Amendment and I own firearms, but I was absolutely appalled by the racist and intimidating behavior that came from the gun toting militia who were organized by Commissioner McDonald and others who caused the youth of this town extreme stress and agony when they were simply trying to engage in a peaceful protest. I was asked by a large number of this youth to read a letter to the council. And I want to provide some context before I read their letter. I think it's very important for people to understand, and I apologize profusely for the language, but one of my kids was called a nigger lover, another one was told to go live in Compton, and one was called a nigger to his face. The city of Sandpoint needs to do a lot better job of protecting our youth from this kind of intimidation and harassment. Peaceful protest without fear of harassment is essential to our republic and democracy. This is the letter that they come up with, and I want to salute these kids, most of them are very young still, they were again, very intimidated by the gun toting militia, and they were called names, and they were followed, and they were harassed. So I want to say, quote, this is from the kids, "Given all the information being posted on social media, posted in the newspaper, and talked about in our community, we felt it was time the community heard from those that were actually involved in the Human Rights March that we, the youth, participated in on June 2nd. We are those youth, we are your children, we have something to share. In short, our purpose was solely to peacefully protest against the injustices of minorities in our nation, specifically the recent murders of black men in our country by police and citizens. We gathered to show that we will not bring bigotry and violence into our future in our America. Our intent and our protest were peaceful by our choice. The call to arms that was made by people of our local government, Commissioner Dan McDonald specifically, was not wanted, not needed, and was 100% threatening in our minds. We felt intimidated and unsafe. We know they say they were there to protect us, and that we appreciated this show of force and intimidation, but this is not true at all. You need to hear from us. This act had negative effects on our opinion of many in our community, especially those who were voted into serve us, such as Commissioner McDonald and the many other community members who showed up with guns, those from out of town who showed up with guns, called by Commissioner McDonald, they followed us, they loitered around town for hours after the march as a show of intimidation force, and they called us names and used racial slurs. Our sincere hope as your children is for a peaceful America where Black Lives Matter, and we can respect each other and all of our unique and beautiful differences. So I want to commend these kids for speaking up, I appreciate them utilizing me as a voice. Sandpoint has had a long, terrible history of racism, and we need to do a better job of protecting our community and our kids. Thank you."
Thank you, Mr. Waldrop.
Jared McDonald?
Thank you, Council, for allowing me the opportunity to address you, Jared McDonald, I live outside of Sandpoint. I'd like to speak concerning some of the contentious issues surrounding the whole gun thing and protesting, and to a limited extent, the masks as well. It's sound advice that those in positions of influence and power exercise great prudence, wisdom, and be ever mindful of the consequences in acting upon frivolous agendas initiatives, which may adversely affect those they would seek to govern. I find the issue before us that I described earlier, which lay before this political body that is, to be agenda driven and further predicated upon cogent sentimentality. Through the act of entertaining the notions that punitive legislation, proclamations of support should possibly be pursued for the sake of an emotionally charged but politically weaponized issue, I submit that there is little prudence, wisdom, or mindfulness to consequences within this council. By engaging in thus justifying a sentimental, not legal concern, it is beyond question that the members of this council are failing to maintain impartiality, and are further to it blind to the precedent to be set in consequence of this type of action, that being political weaponization of worry. In other words, the legitimization of the heckler's veto. Such a notion, the potential that individual liberties which cause no quantifiable harm to person or property, be they marching for civil justice or in defense of community, can and should be repressed via legislation, legislative action, or officially stated support, all for the sake of those who voice that they are uncomfortable with their existence and practice of these liberties, is repugnant to free society and should be vigorously opposed. The fundamental consequence of this sort of initiative is not to establish order for the betterment of society through ambiguous interpretation of law, but rather to invite legislation for legitimization of the heckler and thus further infringements. It sends not a message of good governance, but instead, one of abandoning impartial, principled reasoning in favor of politicized sentiment. Further, if this council sees fit to take action on every emotionally contentious issue in which, again, no harm to any person nor property be done for the sake of vain magnanimity as the recent proclamation clearly shows, then it ceases to be a legitimate governing body and instead acts now as a morally posturing nanny, coddling the indignant. You mustn't understand that such a body will never effectively serve the constituency if it feels the need to placate private sentiment at every turn. In conclusion, these are divisive and contentious times, and there is a strain on the fabric of our community that members of this council, by brashly acting, have deepened. One cannot speak to the unity and liberties for few people unless they speak for the unity and liberties of all people, even those they disagree with. Concerning these issues, let it be said that freemen assembled, let it be said that freemen protested and bore arms, and let it be said that freemen did no harm.
Thank you, sir, your time is up. Clerk?
Randy Lou?
Yes. Hi, my name is Randy Louie, and I'm a resident of downtown Sandpoint. First, I want to thank you for your time. I wanted to address the council and citizens today regarding the possible legal action assistance offered by Georgetown University Law Center. These are the reasons why I believe this is the best next step forward for our town. Last city council meeting, there was a paid actor who spoke to the council, a person who does not live in Sandpoint, not even in Idaho, who was encouraged and supported financially and otherwise to come to our town and talk to our city leaders as a black man by the very constitutionalist that we are saying were intimidating and silencing peaceful protesters. This person admittedly, admitted publicly on a podcast after the meeting that he had no knowledge of Sandpoint's history of white supremacy, who states that the few hours he spent, he had no issues with our town or citizens racially or otherwise. While I'm glad that a tourist had no issues and hope none do, this is not a true representation of our town or what our local citizens of color experience in their daily lives. I find this very disingenuous and not helpful to our citizens of Sandpoint, whose voices and experiences are the ones that should be heard in these meetings. This is what those who would undermine our freedom of speech and right to assemble do to gaslight this council and the very citizens they are intimidating. During the original peaceful protest, those same voices were being intimidated by those armed citizens who were called into action by a county commissioner and showed up to, as they say, protect our town. First, let me ask you, protect from what? How are teenage peaceful unarmed protesters in broad daylight on a bridge going to riot and loot local businesses? Last time I looked, there were no businesses on the Long Bridge. Therefore, I find their reasons not truthful. Their intimidation that these young protesters felt, I believe, was the true reason for the gun toting militia for being there, to silence protesters and threaten them by intimidation, not to protect. And if some of you do not believe racism is alive and well here in Sandpoint, I can give you an example of one incident at a very recent protest where I, along with a group I was with, experienced when another young citizen yelled at us, "White Lives Matter More, F You," as they drove by. If this council would like to hear the voices of the actual citizens of color in this town, they need to make those citizens and their families feel safe, safe from further discrimination and threat of violence. If you did not see them at the protest, there are reasons for that. First, some were threatened, so did not feel safe attending those protests, and second, those that were there stayed out of public sight by keeping away from photographers and hiding behind objects to protect themselves and their families from further harassment and threats. However, the council would like to hear from them in person, I would be happy to be a conduit between these citizens and this council and the chief of police to meet in private and share their experiences and fears. You cannot make it without hearing their voices, and they cannot speak if they are not safe. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for those comments.
Peyton Raymond?
One moment, I just have this on my phone. Is it okay if I keep the mask on?
Sure.
Dear Councilman and Mayor, I and my affiliated group call on all elected officials, you, to make statements in support of racial justice and the goals of the Black Lives Matter movement. The Sandpoint City Council must require and fund annual anti-racism training for all police and city staff members. In addition, all police must receive additional and regular de-escalation training. The Sandpoint City Council must also create a community oversight board for the city police department as well as a school board, in line with what is recommended by Campaign Zero. Additionally, the LPUSD school board must develop policies to prohibit racist activities and the display of outright racist hate symbols and actions at school similar to existing dress code rules. Because if a woman or a boy should be told what to wear, then why cannot they be told what to not say? Because it's unfair, as a young individual who is also part of the people of color community, to face racial injustice from my fellow classmates when all we share is love? They must also develop a restorative justice model for enforcing these rules to help perpetrators learn from their actions. Because calling someone slurs, pushing them in lockers, and finding them after school to say such rude and heinous words is unfair. It is harassment, and under the law, it is prohibited. This would also mean Sandpoint High School must also take disciplinary action using the same restorative justice model for the students involved in harassing protesters and posting race-based comments and slurs online and publicly harassing individuals as well, specifically students, because the threat and actions of violence cannot go unnoticed. We ask you to fund and require anti-racism training for the teachers, staff, and students at LPUSD as they are trained to spot if a girl's skirt is too short or if a boy's shirt is covering his muscles enough. I would also like to make extra comments that Sandpoint is not a community that purely sees love, because it is not. I have individuals who are black who every day experience at least one slur, especially with the uprising of tensions, and they show nothing but love for this community that has treated them both unfairly and fairly from different individuals. I, as an individual from a Hispanic family, have been told to get off my wet back ass, excuse my language, jump the border, and go back to my country, and I was born in this very same country. I would like to talk based on the Jewish individuals and persons in this community who have faced antisemitism comments, not only at school, but at work and in their lives. And I know that there are individuals sitting in this room as well, behind me and in front of me, that show nothing but love for minorities. But just like there are people behind me and in front of me that love one another, there's also those outside that hate us, that hate black individuals. And I know my time is up, but I'd like to make one last comment. There comes a time when silence and apathy is betrayal. What is a promise from your community but a contract with no signature? Do not take our words and frustrations with a grain of salt, and I ask you to think of my voice today, not as a single soul, but as the outcry of many in Sandpoint. Thank you.
Thank you for those passion words.
Alicia Abbott?
Thank you. I would really like to thank the empowered young woman who spoke before me. I echo her sentiments, but that's not what I would like to talk about tonight. Thank you, Mayor and city council members, for the opportunity to talk with you. My name is Alicia Abbott, and I reside in Sandpoint City Limits. I'm going to try to keep this short and sweet. Please, I would, I would really like you guys to reconsider the offer of free assistance and professional help from the Institute for Constitutional Advocacy and Protection from Georgetown University as a tool to guide our very, very divided community towards some dispute resolution for the following reasons. Idaho Code 46-802 makes it clear that only the governor or the president of the United States can call the unorganized militia into service of the public. We need to talk about this because the rights of a very large majority to not live in an occupation were violated when a handful of very frightened citizens thought it was okay to become a police force based on misinformation. Number two, an obvious and egregious amount of misinformation in our local community social media groups led to this occupation of our downtown shopping districts by armed citizens. As a community, we really need to find the resources and, I'm sorry, the sources of this misinformation to hold them accountable. We shouldn't be lied to as a community, and I think ICAP can really help us with this bigger picture issue. Dispute resolution is much different than litigation and is an effective model ensuring mutual understanding is reached. ICAP offered exactly this service in their letter to the city of Sandpoint in Botter County, and we should trust that this is their intention, that they really want to guide us through our issues, that we come out whole. Another issue is that the offer of this assistance is free. Taxpayers deserve leadership that will pursue all free options to avoid future litigation in this situation. We do not have the resources for dispute resolution needed in this situation, and it is the responsible thing to do if revolution of differences is the end goal. We can use this opportunity of free assistance to talk about the events of June 2nd without delivering punishment or placing blame. This is the main goal here that we learned from our experience. We cannot dismiss the genuine fear of armed citizens, and we could not ignore the rights that were violated on those days. We can come to a clear understanding-
Ms. Abbott, Ms. Abbott, your time is up. Thank you for your comments, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Michelle Mandoff?
Hello, my name is Michelle Mandoff, and I live in Sandpoint. I want to talk about the Division, and I think it started a little bit longer than a few months ago. I think it started with the election of Trump. We have been lied to over and over and over again, and where I want to go with this is, that's when a lot of the name-calling started. I've been called a racist, I've been called a homophobe, and if anybody, and all the other isms that go with it, and if anyone ever knew me, knew me, they would know that was untrue. I want to bring forth some truth that the media is not talking about, and that is the Russian- Russian collusion and all the names they called Trump back in the days. Not that I agree with everything that he is doing, but the congressional testimonies came out, and Clapper, Brennan, Peter Strzok, Lisa, and several others admitted under oath that there was no evidence of any collusion. Yet, they got on the media, and they lied, and the media lied to us 24/7 for three years, and that's caused a lot of division, not only in this community, but in the communities across the country. So I just want to open people's eyes to the fact that the media lies, and it will lie for their agenda, and that agenda, I believe, is continuing to break the country up to the point where cities are being destroyed because it's part of the agenda. My grandkids were downtown the day of the protest, and I asked them, I was a little bit intimidated by the guns, but I knew that we're there for the good after seeing what we saw happen across our country. And I asked them if they were intimidated, and neither one was, one's 15, the other 16. However, their reality is a bit different where they were raised around guns. Thank you very much.
Thank you for those comments, Ms. Mandoff.
Rebecca Holland. Am I on? My name is Rebecca Holland.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, thanks. I'm a 45-year resident in the Sully Valley with the Sandpoint business. I'd like to give an update and comment on three subjects. First, I'd like to give an update on our Love Lives Here program that was mentioned tonight. It is being widely accepted by our business owners, and we are receiving lots of messages from those who'd like to participate. In fact, our team of ambassadors can't keep up. To a negative point I heard said tonight, we are not doing cold calls, so certainly there has been no arm twisting. I know of only one business that joined in the first week of the campaign that told us she needed to take our sticker down because her partner doesn't want it now. We suspect because of the harassment some business owners are getting from opponents. But regardless of the negativity created by Commissioner McDonald on our very positive kindness program is doing very well, and we are strongly committed to showing Sandpoint and surrounding area as inclusive of all people here and for all the right reasons. Secondly, I'd like to concur with everything Councilwoman Ruhl said regarding the COVID rise and how we should be reacting to that, as well as what two citizens, Matt Nelke and Allison Johnson, said. It's disappointing that our numbers are rising and we are not reacting. On a good note, I am very pleased that the Sandpoint Fire Department is wearing the N92 masks that were made for them by the Angels Over Sandpoint, though. And last point, many of us citizens are not pleased at all knowing an armed militia can take to our streets on the whim of Commissioner McDonald over a bogus boogeyman. This is a problem, and Georgetown offered information that could be very helpful. I still want to urge council to reconsider and invite ICAP to come meet with you and possibly some other community people to discuss the issue with hopefully available options for a solution. It is not a commitment to do anything. In the interest of appearing neutral and nonpartisan, do we not seek out accountability for an illegal call to action of unregulated militia patrolling Sandpoint? I know the city has good legal counsel, but these days attorneys are specialized, and this is a very unique issue. Good expert information is always valuable. Let's meet this moment, not miss it. Thank you for giving me a couple of minutes to express my thoughts, which are 100% backed by my husband, Don Holland, by my side. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Holland.
Brian Leshay.
Good evening. My name is Ryan Lesh, and I live outside of the city limits. I'll make this quick. Regarding actions this last month, there have been many threats from the opposition with being against this one prominent elected official and their favorite local political group. They have slandered and harassed anyone who disagrees with them to include local business owners and even local veterans. They have also accused myself and others of personally going out that day to shoot children and people of color that didn't agree with us. All of this was said with no pushback from this elected official or their base. They allowed it to continue because this is how they truly feel about us and recent events. Sandpoint is the hub of our county and means a lot to many outside of city limits, so this elected official implying that our voices from the county don't matter is just wrong. So to the council, thank you for the post today and your decision to choose unity over political drama and lies, but we all know it's not the words or feelings of this elected official and their base. Due to the continued lies, slander, and harassment that this one elected official has called for and allowed to happen for almost a month now through their political page, favorite local organization, and the local papers, the city needs to be aware that they are not out of the woods yet from legal repercussions due to this one official's comments and decisions in recent weeks. Their comments have caused permanent damage locally, and it's all provable. All but one of our elected officials is for unity and the truth, and they will be held accountable for their actions and words and will also be held to the standard and position in which they hold. Thank you and God bless. And on my last thing, I would like to say, anyone who's listening, if you're for truth and unity in our community, I would like to encourage everyone to check out the podcast interview I did recently with Chris Bassett on the Bonner Breakdown. Thank you.
Cal Walters.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Hi, my name is Cal Walters. I am now a resident of Nampa, Idaho, but I grew up in North Idaho, very near Sandpoint. Spent most of my life there. I joined in on this call today just to provide support for the voices of the young activists and protesters who are simply trying to have their perspective heard and speak up for the safety and well-being of brown and black community members in Sandpoint. Having grown up in this area, I am intimately familiar with the culture, and when I hear people saying things such as, there is a culture of tolerance and peace and speaking words such as truth and unity, what I hear is, and this is not a personal attack, but what I hear is gaslighting, and that is the erasure of people's experiences that they are trying to share simply to advocate for their safety. I would like to just simply remind everybody who lives within the Sandpoint of the flyers that have been passed out. Last time I remember, it was 2017. I would like to remind people that I had friends growing up who had KKK posters and flyers left on their doorstep in the Apple and Sandpoint areas. This is not simply about this moment right now, and it's not simply about this movement. This, the racism that people experience in Idaho is, has an enormous history. Idaho was found by the Southern Poverty Law Center this year to be in the top five, I think actually the number-one states for hate groups. And I, having experienced this and witnessed my friends and colleagues experience this over and over, I just want to say as a concerned Idaho citizen that this, it is very frustrating to witness the continued gaslighting, and I would encourage people to take a seat and actually listen and try to understand where these demands, where these concerns are coming from. These students are being bullied, they are being harassed, and no one in the administration is taking the actions that should be taken for them, and that is, as the young woman said before me, a betrayal. We've seen over and over the message of keep Idaho safe and keep Idaho white, and at this point, I think we need to actually take a stand and stop relying on these blase stereotypes of unity, because without addressing people's legitimate concerns about abuse, harassment, and frankly terrorism, there is no unity.
Thank you for those comments. Appreciate that. Mr. Walters.
Matt Nikhil.
Yeah, thank you. I live here in the city of Sandpoint, and just two notes. The first is-
Hey, Matt, just so you know, we can't hear you super well. If you can either get close to your mic, or that would probably help.
Yeah, is this better?
Yeah, that's good. Thanks.
Okay. I live in the city of Sandpoint, and just two notes. I just want to show my support for the mayor being vocal that our city is a welcoming city for all people of all backgrounds and opinions, and I think it's important that the city make that known, and I think that's totally appropriate for a city and elected officials to do. The second point I just wanted to note was that, well, first, I guess I should have said this from the outset, but I really do appreciate all of the council's service. It's a particularly hard time, and so I appreciate all your service. I hate to, you know, I think it's important that as we try to address all these issues, we remember where they stem from, which is the murder of George Floyd, and I hate to have to address something that doesn't get at that, but our community is having to deal with things that are unusual. I personally don't have as much trouble being downtown or in public spaces where folks are carrying firearms, but I've heard from a number of my friends who have daughters and kids who have felt uncomfortable, and so I do think it's something our community needs to address. And so I was disappointed to hear that the city's not at least open to just learning more from the Institute for Constitutional Advocacy and Protection. I think, you know, if there are reputable groups that have free information or free consultation services on public health issues, you know, certainly I would hope the city would accept that information. Similarly here, I think it would be perfectly acceptable to just hear them out and learn more. I heard in the city's statement that we, the city has its own attorney, so I guess I would be interested to be, as a community member, kept up to date as to whether or not our city attorney is investigating the sort of issues that ICAP was bringing up and whether or not it would be appropriate or useful for our city to just learn more about those things. So I just encourage the city to be open to learning more, especially when there are free opportunities to do so. Thanks.
Thank you for those comments, Mr. Nikhil. Appreciate it.
Gora.
Mr. Gora, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yep. We can hear you.
My name is Janice Gore. My name is Janice Gore. I live outside of Sandpoint. And first of all, I thought it was very interesting that when the names Rebecca Holland and North Idaho women were brought up, the speaker was admonished. However, Dan Holland, or Dan McDonald, was raked through the mud several times, and nobody said a word. It's this type of double standard coming out of Sandpoint that I find particularly alarming. And as far as mentioning the first two names, I have screenshots to back up what that first person said. Now, this is what disturbs me about Sandpoint and why I avoid Sandpoint is because of all the mudslinging without any validation. You've got paramilitary, oh, come on. Paramilitary is highly organized, they're structured, they have a leader, they can be called up by the army to fight at any time. They're not a bunch of men walking around exercising their constitutional rights according to state law. They're not vigilantes. They are not punishing crime. They are not doors of justice. They did absolutely nothing except apparently scare some kids and maybe say some appropriate things. And what's alarming is these are coming from people with positions of authority that are slinging these terms around and are letting this go on while you will admonish someone for saying something about Rebecca Holland and North Idaho women, and I think I heard Dan Holland's, or Dan McDonald's name in a negative way at least five times, and nobody said a word. This city council or this Sandpoint continues to show why a lot of us avoid it and why the Love Lives Here is a joke. Thank you.
Ms. Johnston, are you there?
Yes, thank you. I as well would like to thank the city council members for your service in this particularly difficult time over the course of listening to this meeting that I feel privileged to have been a part of. I've heard so much divisiveness, I feel like I'm just beginning to grasp the issues at hand. So I wanted to speak to a couple of things. One was my experience of driving through downtown Sandpoint on the day that armed citizens were there. I was frightened myself. I was frightened for, I didn't know what was happening, no one was in uniform. I was scared because I had my daughter in the car with me, who is two years old, and I got out of town as fast as I could because I had no idea what was happening. I am concerned, of course, with the larger national conversation of the very legitimate calls from Black Lives Matter for, as well as for their desire to defund the police. And at the same time, I also understand that in that moment, had I seen anyone in a uniform in Sandpoint, I probably would have been running to their, for their assistance, given how afraid I was to see so many people with large guns who are clearly not going hunting. I'd also like to speak, given that these are convergent issues between COVID, this issue of race, as something that I'd like to take accountability for in an arena of a lot of mudslinging. We live in a racist system. I am a white woman. I have benefited from a racist system, and I'm just coming to terms now with the concept of white fragility, where power structures are being questioned for the first time on such a level in this, in my, in my time on this earth. I believe that I have to come to terms with this, I have to come to terms with the reckoning on how I've benefited from being white, and I plan on doing this as best as I can. I'd like to show my support for the children who are doing the best they can to get their voices heard. I would really like to encourage the city council once again to reconsider the offer that ICAP has to be able to really analyze such a difficult and complicated issue. I don't think it's something we can handle internally. I think it's something we have to start to really consider who we are and how we are, rather than looking and trying to get, make people find specific examples of where racism has happened. It is all around it, we are soaked in it. So we need to start really taking a look at what this means and taking accountability as a community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnston.
Mr. Mayor, there isn't anyone else online who would like to speak?
Okay. Is there anyone in here who would like to speak that hasn't spoken on this issue? Yes? Yeah, please come forward. Corey, is there anyone outside? No? Okay, thanks.
Oh, my gosh, so many things going on tonight. Kate Orson, again, I'm outside of the city limits. First off- First off, citizens showing up armed to protect their town from looting and violence are not an organized militia. Let's remember that night, nothing happened, nobody was hurt. The town stayed beautiful and safe. In the parking lot, I was there. Cars would come in, young men, women, children walking to go protest were greeted kindly. We were both there, you know, doing what we had the right to do. I mean, have we been concealed carrying? Would people have not been so scared? I don't understand where these people are so scared of guns. Does it come from Hollywood? Do we need to offer free gun training so people can understand that people can carry guns safely? And it's not what a lot of these people are saying. Anyway, secondly, after listening to the first speaker this evening, I would like to say in regards to the police, Supreme Court has ruled government agencies, including the police agencies, have no duty to provide protection to citizens in general. It is my duty, as it is your duty, to protect ourselves. Police enforce law. Third, the "Love Lives Here" campaign is of divisive nature. With that, I don't believe it's something that cities should be endorsing. After speaking with a few businesses with a sticker newly placed in their windows, they either did so out of pressure and or didn't understand what it meant, and were just so busy, they took the sticker to get back to work. This campaign is further dividing our community. The people behind this campaign, I have only witnessed hate from, I'm talking about me personally. If you do not have similar beliefs as they do, you're blocked from their social media. Even when just asking questions, you are blocked. I have been attacked online. People are being attacked in person. If they, let's see, I said about questions. And it's like, no wonder she mentioned she's so busy. She's busy blocking everybody. So to me, it looks like not all are welcome. We should all be accepted for our different beliefs, our backgrounds, etc., if love truly lived here. With that being said, I would hope that this campaign would come to a stop, and businesses do not need to be divided in the community by a campaign and that sticker. Let's see, I have a little bit more time. Back to the mask thing. We do not make these crazy drastic moves during flu season. We are told that the flu season is much worth, has much more deaths than this COVID crisis craziness. We will not save our economy down the road. Businesses will just won't make it if we go back to stage three like that. It's councilwoman, I forget her name, mentioned. I just can't even believe that. And when researching, we always need to look at who's funding this real science. One comment, one commenter on masks, she stated, "I do it for you." Sadly, she's creating division among people, among these, among wearing masks by saying something like that. We are responsible for ourselves. Thank you.
Okay, I think, is there anyone else, clerk?
Mr. Mayor, someone online has raised their hand.
Okay.
Jennifer Words.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Hello, we can hear you. Yep, we can hear you fine.
First off, I'd like to, I thought I had something important to say. But then, when the gentleman wrote, read the letter that the students wrote, I just have to, everything else I have to say would pale in comparison. I want to show my support for those kids. And also, I teach in the schools, and so I see these students. I'm very proud of what they what they composed and chose to share. And then, when I go to the "Love Lives Here" campaign, I lived here but way before those signs were here. And one of the reasons I moved here was because it wasn't a slogan, and it wasn't a sign. It was what you felt when you were downtown. It was what you felt. And I still am lucky enough to feel that in some situations. Love lived here. It really was. We were very neighborly. And now, we've become divisive, as that is a very, you know, overused word. And that makes me very sad. And I think that, for example, I would feel better with this militia if they really wanted to show their support. I would feel better trying to find a compromise that can they be trained? Can they be identified? Can, if they really want to join our police force, let them join the police force. That's where our trust is in, is our police force, not somebody that self appoints. And then, what would? Everybody says nothing happened. But if you take that to its logical conclusion, and something does happen, say a kid kicks a rock, and somebody said, oh, did you see he threw a brick and shoots him? Nobody, I haven't heard it from the police department, or the mayor, or the council, that that's going to be murder. That's, that's, you weren't protecting your home. You weren't standing your ground. How come nobody addresses that? So I appreciate your time. And I really hope we come to a good conclusion or good compromise where we can be safe again and be neighborly again. And I do think that the masks, you also don't realize who the people are going home to. So it's not just about you. It's about the parent that's going home to a newborn that had to, that parent had to go to work that day. So it's, it's not about whether you're protecting you. So I do agree with the speaker who said, you know, that you take, you can only take responsibility for, I'm sharing with you this virus. And if you don't have enough concern for me, then that's not "Love Lives Here" as I remember it. And it's really not very neighborly. And it's definitely scientifically wrong that you don't care enough to stay away, that you're not worried about the asthmatic at home, or the someone that goes home to their grandmother, or the children that I see at school. So anyway, thank you for your time. I obviously am very passionate about our town. And I appreciate hearing that's all.
Thank you, Ms. Words, for your comments. All right, with that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah?
Someone else has raised their hand. Allison Barrows Young.
Hello? Can you hear me?
We can, yep, we can hear you.
Okay, I wasn't going to speak today. I was just going to listen. But I would like to implore you to reconsider ICAP and having them come in to help us sort out the anger and differences, the conflicts that are going on in our city. I, I also believe that we need to have more of an understanding of what is real and what is not real. And that probably goes for both sides. But I've heard a lot of statements that are anti-scientific, anti-constitutional. I'm hearing things that are false and need to be, we need to be set clear on what these things are. And I feel like if we had a mediator come in, the ICAP people that said that they would come in, who could specialize in this kind of community organization and development, it would be extremely helpful. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate those comments.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah?
A couple of others have raised hands.
Okay.
Diana Duke.
Say it again.
Diana Duke.
Yes, hello, this is Diana Duke. I do live in Sandpoint, in the city limits. I was there on June 2nd, that day, and it was very intimidating to see all of those citizens with guns. My, we came down to protest after we saw protesters walk across the Long Bridge, and followed by two men with with military-style rifles. When we came down, we did not expect a whole parking lot full of individuals with military-style rifles. My husband is very used to guns. He grew up Terry family. He's from Texas. And he was the one that decided we needed not to do our, you know, to go and protest and walk across the Long Bridge. We both felt intimidated. And his, he grew up in this military family. His grandparents are buried in Arlington. So he's a very patriotic family, but he felt uncomfortable. And I would just like to say that I would really appreciate if the mayor would reconsider and the city council would reconsider bringing individuals from outside in to take a look to see if this is is proper activity. Because like the the teacher said, something could have happened. And I think that my husband actually had the wherewithal to get us out of there, because he felt that something could have happened very easily. Like she said, a rock was kicked. Someone that's ready for something to happen with a gun and is untrained could very well possibly have done something to an innocent individual. And the other thing is, we, that day, we had planned on going down, walking across the bridge, kind of, you know, expressing our feelings towards Black Lives Matter, and, you know, engulfing the community that feels the same way that we do, and then going to dinner. And after, and supporting the businesses that have been struggling. And we did not do that. So I can just imagine a visitor from the outside coming in, seeing that, and leaving, and not going to dinner, not supporting the businesses in our area, the struggling businesses in our area. So that's all I'd like to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Duke, for those comments.
Selby Jenkins.
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you fine.
Okay, thank you. I am joining you today. I am in Boise. I realize that I'm outside of Sandpoint. But I think that it's pertinent, because I attended the Black Lives Matter protest last night in Boise. If you guys have seen the news, or if you've seen things circulating, you know that a lot of the counter protesters there did end up violently reacting to a lot of the Black Lives Matter protesters. They were bearing guns. Not to say that they used any that we know of. But I just wanted to shed light and kind of echo on something that some other people have been saying in that, just because something did not specifically happen that was necessarily, that had a gun involved with it, there have been things that have been, there's been violence and oppression and discrimination against black people for centuries and people of color for centuries. So this is not to say that just because something didn't happen at a specific protest does not mean that it's not already been happening. So I just wanted to kind of share that. And also, again, advocate for listening to people. There was, there were a lot of people at the protest last night that were counter protesters and Black Lives Matter protesters that were having discussions amidst the protest, after the protest, that seemed to be yielding some beneficial results, or at least some mutual education for each other and each other's viewpoints. And I think that that's important. I also wanted to speak on behalf of the people that are, the woman that made a comment earlier about being blocked, and just say, this is a very violent situation for a lot of black people and people of color. And they know, and they, I'm sure that they, I can't speak for them, of course. I, I just want to say, I, what, from what I've heard, it's that the blocking is being done because there is little to no negotiation in, yeah, having a mutual conversation or having a mutual understanding of where each other are coming from. So, yeah, just to kind of echo off all of that and say that it is really important for us to all sit down and discuss these systems that are put into place and that have been perpetuated since the genesis of the United States of America, talking through these systems and realizing that it's not just isolated events, but that it's a part of something bigger. And we should hopefully have the wherewithal to sit with each other and discuss and hopefully educate and learn.
Ma'am, thank you for your comments. Appreciate that. Any others? Yes, okay, we're still going.
Linda Evans.
Thank you. I'm Linda Evans. I'm a longtime member of our community. I've worked in Sandpoint since 1982. I currently own a business in Sandpoint, and I've owned several businesses in Sandpoint during those years. And I really have, I live outside, I live out at Rennco, so hopefully you can hear me, because I don't have very good cell service out here. But I wanted to speak to a couple of issues. One, I believe that we've really had, for the teachers that have made comments and to individuals in our community, we really have a perfect opportunity to show what our constitution is all about. And what I'm saying is that the Black Lives Matter protests is a beautiful expression of our freedom of speech. And it needs to be honored and protected, as well as the right of the individuals to bear arms. And I wanted to address that one facet of it, that in the context, because we all look through these situations through our own lenses, and our own understanding, that for some of you younger ones, you look at, you look at these guys as, like you did, mayor vigilantes or militia. But in reality, the Supreme Court recently ruled, as I sent you an email today, 2008, the Supreme Court ruled that the Second Amendment guarantees individuals the right to possess firearms independent of service in the state militia, and to use those firearms for traditionally lawful purposes, including self-defense in homes and businesses. So our neighbors that responded, having watched, all of us have watched, a lot of anarchy, we've watched a lot of burning, we've watched a lot of windows being broken, and storefronts being looted, and the robbery, all of this, even in Spokane. So they only went in to get the Nikes, but same thing happened. That, that is what those individuals, not vigilantes and not militia, neighbors, came into town, came from wherever they did, to protect our businesses. And I'm one of them. I appreciated that. I understand the position that what the teachers are saying, and some of the others of the kids feeling intimidated. But that is a perfect opportunity to provide an actual visual to say, no, now let's look at the constitution. Because both sides of these need to be represented in our community. And it isn't that, oops, I'm going over time, aren't I? So I'll stop.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Evans, for your comments. Appreciate it.
I applaud you. I applaud you for doing what you're trying. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Krista Everly.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you fine.
My name is Krista Everly, and I do not live in the city of Sandpoint. I wasn't going to talk, but I feel compelled. So I've been involved with the "Love Lives Here" campaign, and I just want to try to attempt to make a public statement about what the "Love Lives Here" campaign means for me, and what I believe it means to the people who have been involved with initiating it. It's an opportunity for people to make a public statement that you're committed to non-discrimination and safety. By displaying a sign like this, basically, all you're doing is saying, hey, I'm open-minded, I'm willing to talk, I'm not going to discriminate against you. If someone is concerned about, I think if you went to anybody that's displaying a "Love Lives Here" sticker and said, hey, I think this is, this is wrong, they would be willing to have a conversation with you about it. I would be willing to have a conversation with you about it. It's not divisive. It's not intended to be divisive. It's intended to give people an opportunity to make a public statement about being willing to, well, like I said, non-discrimination. And the only other thing is to say that it's a nation program. It has different iterations in different states, but it's basically the same thing that we support non-discrimination activities. Thank you. but it's basically the same thing, that we support non-discrimination activities. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments, Ms. Everly. Sir, did you want to speak?
Yes, I did.
Okay, please come forward.
My name's Dan Welly. I've lived up here for the last 10 years, retired from the city of Los Angeles. I've experienced something that none of you have. I was a participant as a police officer in the 1992 riots in Los Angeles. What your civilians did here prevented you becoming a victim like Los Angeles, Seattle, New York, Chicago. They prevented that. Now, some of them had bad mouths. They were idiots. Can't help that in any group. Not every politician is a bad politician. Not every politician is a good politician. Not every cop is a good cop. I've seen my sheriff cops go to jail. I know what it's about. You cannot let the federal government come in here and disrupt your city. Letting ICAP come in is tantamount to allowing a consent decree, come in by a university with a dubious reputation by today's standards. They will cause more dissent than they will heal. Just bear that in mind. If you have to bring them in, are you guys really doing your jobs here? That's my point of view. Make it or leave it.
Thank you, Mr. Welly. Appreciate that. Clerk, do we still have more online?
Uh, no, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we've got one more here. Okay.
Daniel Radford from Cooney. So, I actually did something that leftists don't really do, or that many of us did. First, I got off Facebook, which might be a good thing for everybody. Secondly, I talked to the other side when I was down there. And I agreed on them with a lot of things. One guy named Daniel, actually, also named Daniel, he really eloquently described what he thought white privilege was, and I was really surprised how much we had in common with how we thought about it. Another guy was guarding what I think was the Powder Hound Pizza place. I don't know, I was guarding it. The looters already got there. But the difference between our viewpoint is that I wasn't trolled by a certain somebody into thinking busloads of anti-fascists were coming to loot Sandpoint. I'm not really sure what we prevented, you know, because I don't really think in our city of 8,000, there was, you know, there was like some rumor about a semi-truck of weapons and people coming over from Spokane, supposedly caught by the Idaho State Police, and that was completely debunked. Yeah, so, let's see, if I can find my place. Yeah, so, I mean, the premise kind of falls flat on its face. It's utterly laughable that they were defending anyone. It was pretty obvious that this is an organized paramilitary group intimidating people from expressing their First Amendment rights. All right, I'm all Second Amendment. I love it. I own guns myself. I totally agree. And had this been an organic expression of people pretend, defending their businesses, that would have actually made sense. But this wasn't. This was an organized group by the three percenters, by seven Bravo, all right? We already know the group's organizing this. This isn't organized militia, a group of militias, coming in to intimidate students, young people, many of them who were not armed, all right? To prevent them from actually expressing how they view in our city. You know what I mean? And again, let's imagine that someone did throw a rock through a window. Oh, my God, let's shoot them, okay? Even by the most archaic biblical law, all right? This is as described by Pastor Jim Osmond at Cooney Community Church. It's a limitation on violence. Eye for an eye, tooth for a tooth. All right, that means if someone punches you, you don't chop their head off. You can punch them back, but that's a limitation, all right? Someone loots a business, they should be financially looted. They should have to pay for that. Does that mean they should be shot? No, I don't think so. I don't actually think that's justice. Yeah, so, I mean, again, had I been trolled by a certain somebody into thinking that busloads of Antifa were coming to Sandpoint, I would have probably joined in, in defending the businesses. But I was smart enough, because I don't spend as much time on Facebook, to know that that wasn't actually a reality, and that wasn't something we had to be afraid of. Yeah, anyway, that's all.
Thank you for those comments. Okay. I think we made it. That concludes our regular agenda. The final item, well, actually, there's one final item on the agenda this evening, and that's an executive session. I would entertain a motion to convene an exec, executive session pursuant to Idaho Code 74-206F to communicate with legal counsel regarding the legal ramifications of and legal options for pending litigation or controversies not yet being litigated, but imminently likely to be litigated. Is there a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. This will be a roll call, though.
Councilman Burrow?
Yes. Yes.
Councilman Darling?
Yes.
Councilwoman McAllister?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rule?
Yes.
Okay, the council will now convene into executive session after a couple-minute break. And this concludes the public forum portion of the meeting, so I'd ask everyone else to please leave the room and have a good night. Thank you for your participation this evening.
Thanks for sticking around, folks.